Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 9th, 2018. Could we have the roll, please?
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
Mitzi Barker.
Here.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
John Spring, Danielle Bailey, and Seth Anderson have been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. We have in front of us minutes for Monday, June 11th. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes? Thank you, Mitzi is a second.
I guess I'm on my screen is not what it needs to be.
You good? I got a motion to approve the minutes by Mitzi Barker, seconded by Mr. Looney. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are adopted. Next up is disclosures. We'll go down the line. Any disclosures? Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I'll just put on the record. I'm trying to find which case this relates to to confirm, but I work at a law firm and I've recently started doing some work for Dowell. It's employment work, but I saw their name in these materials, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
I'll ask Mr. Strick to walk through disclosures.
Yes, on the conflict of interest portion, does the member have a substantial financial interest or substantial private interest in the matter now before the body? And is that interest a substantial part of the present addition? Action? One that varies directly and substantially with the outcome? Or let's go off one at a time, I guess. A substantial part of the present action?
No.
One that varies directly and substantially with the outcome?
No.
Immediate and known or conjectural, inconclusive, and dependent on factors beyond the body's action?
No.
Significant monetarily?
No.
Generally possessed by a large group or only by the individual? If there's an interest, is it by a large group or by an individual? If you have a large interest, then specifically that limited interest is of general nature. And that goes to the root cause of the financial interest.
I'm not sure what the answer would be. It's, the work is performed by my law firm. It's, I don't know if that makes it a large group or not.
Yeah, it's a little bit confused. Can you read the criteria again?
Well, does the member have a substantial financial interest or substantially private interest in the matter now before the body? And is that interest generally possessed by a large group or only by the individual?
Would say by a large group.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I think it's not uncommon for many of us, given the size of our town, to have relationships one way or the other with consulting firms that represent petitioners here and there. I appreciate that disclosure. I would ask that we make a, Mr. Strick, that you make a motion just to clarify.
And I would move that the, we direct the commissioner to participate.
Can I get a second? You want to hit your button, Mr. Strick? Seconded by Mr. Looney. Any further discussion? And Jared, the case number that this relates to?
Well, yeah, I was trying to confirm which one it was that Dowell had prepared materials.
I think it's number one.
I think it's, um...
It's Chugatch.
It's Chugatch.
Right, it's Chugatch?
Yes.
Yeah, so that'd be case number 2018-0065.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could I ask commissioners to please vote on that motion to direct Mr. Gardner to participate? You are directed to participate. Next up is an informational item, technical amendments to Title 21 to correct typographical errors and incorrect cross-references. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. You're right, you're right. We're off to a bad start. Mr. Looney, disclosures. That took so long, I figured we'd be on to something else. Go ahead.
No disclosures.
Mr. Strick?
I'll speed it up. No disclosures.
Andre?
None.
Mitzi?
Nothing to disclose.
And I'd like to disclose that I was not here at the last meeting and therefore won't be voting on the four resolutions before us under the consent agenda. So with that informational item, the floor is yours, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The ordinance before you is an informational item. It's intended to fix incorrect and missing cross-references in our current Title 21. Section 1 of this ordinance deletes two cross-references that do not belong there anymore. There was an ordinance passed a couple of years ago to bring the municipality into compliance with the Fair Housing Act, and it made many changes to our habilitative care and assisted living regulations, facility regulations. And this was just a cross-reference that existed in another section. So one section pointed to another, but that other section, they didn't remove the parenthetical cross-reference. So this will eliminate that confusion. Section 2 of the ordinance adds the R3A district to multiple structures on one lot regulations. So when you have multiple structures on one lot, there's a section of regulations regarding open space and access and a number of regulations, and that's after the residential design standards in Chapter 7. And when the R3 ordinance was adopted last year, the R3A district, they, you know, they didn't add the R3A district to the laundry list of other districts that are subject to those multiple structures on one lot. So today it reads R2M applicability, R2M, R3, R4A, or R4, R4A, and so on. And it needs to add R3A. That was what was intended when the ordinance, when the R3A district was adopted, but this was just a place that, you know, neglected to add that to the laundry list. So this ordinance will fix that. That's what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Any questions of staff? Is there, can I get, Mr. Spring is not here, but he's typically offered just a motion indicating an agreement that these do in fact represent technical amendments as just sort of a motion of support that they don't have to go through the whole process and go through us. Is there anyone here wishing to make that motion just to clarify once it goes to the assembly? And if not, we can remain silent on it. I don't need, I need it, but Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would offer a motion that we accept the technical amendments as presented, recognizing that they are truly of a technical nature and conforming the intent with the actual text in 21, and that we recommend approval, recommend to the Assembly that they approve the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Are you okay with that as a second, Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on Ms. Barker's motion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you, Francis, on that one. Next up is our consent agenda. There are four resolutions for approval on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Strick. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any particular resolutions that any members of the Commission wish to pull for further Seeing none, I ask that you vote on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Those resolutions and that consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have three public hearings in front of us this evening. The first is a case related to Chugatch Electric, conditional use permit. The second is a rezoning. Just to get a sense, I'm just going to take a wild stab. Can I get, can I get a sense of who's here to testify related to the Emerald subdivision case? Okay, anyone here wish, that's here to testify for other cases? Okay. So we're going to go first to Chugatch Electric. The procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission is as follows. After the staff presentation is complete on public hearing items, I'll ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. For petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, 10 minutes, and part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs, five minutes, that's one person gets five minutes for a group. And individuals, three minutes. And I'll keep that pretty close tonight because there's a lot of people here to testify. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable, which are rezonings. Rezonings are recommendations from us to the Assembly. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. So first up is case 2018-65, Chugatch Electric Association Conditional Use Permit for CEA DeBarre Utility Substation Renovation Project. Can we get a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Case 2018-65 is a request for an amendment to an existing conditional use to allow an upgrade to a utility substation in the R2M zoning district. Chugatch Electric states that the existing substation has reached the end of its usable life and needs to be replaced to be able to continue providing the necessary level of service for the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed project includes a full demolition and rebuild of the substation. The development of this site was lawfully existing prior to the requirement for a conditional use for electric substations and is considered to have an approved conditional use. AMC 2112-040-D1B allows the replication of a non-conforming conditional use when the rebuild is completed within one year of the Planning and Zoning Commission approval. Once the non-conforming structure is approved to be rebuilt, it will be considered an approved conditional use and will no longer be subject to the provisions of Chapter 12. The proposed rebuild of this site includes moving the facility's equipment and fencing out of the Patterson Street right-of-way and entirely onto the lot. The existing wood fence will be removed and replaced with a chain-link fence with screening slats. Limited landscaping will be added in the 10th Avenue right-of-way. Landscaping is proposed to be added on the property to the east of the substation to buffer the church use from the substation. The Planning Department finds that this conditional use request meets the approval criteria of AMC 2103-080D. Standard number one is met. The Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as urban use near a transit-supportive corridor. Applicable 2020 policies include the requirement for public facilities and services to meet adopted level of service standards and to minimize, I'm sorry, optimize existing utility infrastructure before extending the facilities to undeveloped areas. The proposed upgrade to the electrical substation will assure that the level of service standards are met, that the electrical service to this area will continue uninterrupted, and will optimize the existing infrastructure without expanding the size of the facility. The Traffic Department comments request paving the driveway. The proposed site plan shows paving. Planning Department has requested a condition of approval for Chugatch Electric to provide the Traffic Department's approval for their paving plans. This project is subject to the requirement to spend 10% of the project costs on improvement in the direction of conformity. The total valuation of the project is $6,050,000. The cost of items being changed in the direction of conformity is $1,876,960. Those costs are exempt from the total project cost. When that amount is removed, the total project is, cost is $4,173,040. 10% of that is $417,304. Total amount being spent on items in direction of conformity, the $1,876,960 is 45% of the total project cost. Details for the items moving in the direction of conformity were inadvertently left out of the staff packet and were emailed to you this afternoon. You also have a hard copy on the desk in front of you tonight. Relocating the facility out of the Patterson Street right-of-way and the reduction of the encroachments into the required setbacks is a change in the direction of conformity. The existing non-conforming fences on the site will be replaced with new chain-link fence with screening slats and will discourage the graffiti that was common on the old wooden wall. The proposed fences will be the same height as the existing fences, but will be relocated onto the lot. The fences at the north and east lot lines will reduce the encroachment into required setbacks and are allowed as changes in the direction of conformity. The site constraints and electrical safety codes do not allow landscaping to be installed within the lot boundaries. Chugatch is seeking an agreement with the neighboring property to the west and with the right-of-way department to install landscaping outside of the lot boundaries. The installation of this landscaping will soften the impact of the substation on neighboring properties. The Planning Department has requested a landscape plan for the proposed landscaping as a condition of approval. The addition of landscaping is a change in the direction of conformity. Standard number two is met. The proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of the R2M zoning district. The substation supports the multifamily developments of this district and the other surrounding districts. The updated facility includes enclosures for transformers and other substation equipment. The new switchgear building will be metal-clad in light gray and will be a more compact facility than previously existed, with a lower visual profile to the surrounding development. Standard number three is met. A utility substation is permitted in the R2M zoning district by conditional use. The use-specific standard for a utility substation requires that the site ensure visual and aesthetic compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood by using similar architectural design and materials as buildings in the neighborhood or by screening the facility with L2 buffer landscaping. The proposed facility includes enclosures for equipment with color similar to those in the surrounding neighborhood. As previously discussed, the facility cannot accommodate L2 buffer landscaping on the site. The addition of landscaping in the 10th Avenue right-of-way and on the abutting church site is a compromise to move in the direction of conformity and will soften the impact of the substation on the adjacent properties. Standard number four is met. The site meets the minimum size requirements for the R2M zoning district and is adequate to accommodate the existing substation. Standard five is met. The character of the surrounding area will not be altered by the rebuilding of this existing substation. The relocation of the equipment entirely out of the right-of-way and the proposed enclosure of the utility equipment will make the site more compatible with the residential character of the neighborhood. The substation has been located at this site since 1963, prior to many of the structures in the area. Standards number six and seven are met. The proposed utility substation will operate unmanned 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. There will be no excessive noise, odor, or dust generated at the site, and site lighting will avoid shining on surrounding properties. There are no adverse impacts to the area anticipated. Standards eight and nine are met. The proposed use generates very little vehicular traffic. The removal of the site equipment and fencing from the Patterson Street right-of-way will improve pedestrian access along that street frontage. The proposed use is within the fire and police safety area and doesn't require any additional public facilities. In conclusion, the Department finds that the approval criteria are met and recommends approval of the modification to the conditional use, subject to the conditions of approval on page nine of the staff packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Any questions for staff? The procedural question, you've, we're looking at the conditional use standards, and then you've sort of embedded in the staff report the 2112-040D, the conversation related to the replicating and non-conforming conditional use, as well as the 10% threshold. Are those separate motions that you'd like us to make or simply be reflected in the findings of the approval of the overall conditional use? Is it one motion that we're making, or is it multiple?
One.
Okay. Just, I'd like everyone to sort of think, those are two additional criteria that come up in this case that don't necessarily come up in normal, overall, general standards that we ought to at least think on in our deliberations, if that makes sense. Any other questions of staff? So hearing none, I'd like to open the public hearing, starting with the petitioner.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tim Potter with Dowell. I'd like to reserve two minutes of rebuttal time if necessary tonight. While they're setting up the graphics, most of the graphics are actually in your case packet, and will show you what the building elevations and site plan look like. We do have a number of people from Chugatch Electric that are electrical engineers and such that are much more technically able to answer some of the electrical-related and substation-related questions as to the required separations between different types of equipment and that. So feel free to ask those questions if you have them. This is kind of an interesting one, much as the Chair indicated. It's a little bit different than what you'd normally run into. The substation was built at 10th and Patterson Street, which is now Patterson Street, back in 1963. Patterson was not in existence at the time. It was a partial section line easement. Utility components could go into section line easement areas. And as a result, when Walmart went in and they were required to build Patterson Street fully, it became very clear that the improvements were actually partway out into the public right-of-way as, I guess, further dedicated by the municipality. So in that, the city did ask Chugatch Electric to modify that, and that started kind of a cascade effect in conjunction with evaluation of what the status of the different facilities were and equipment that was there. As indicated in the write-up in our application, one of the transformers that is located at that site had already failed. The second was being monitored from a chemical standpoint to see how much off-gassing there was and arcing within the transformer, and that can be picked up through chemical tests in the cooling oil that's there. So with all those things in hand, they came to us, we worked with them to come up with a layout and how to process this as a pre-existing, basically a de facto conditional use, do an amendment, qualify as making sure that we were spending at least a 10% that was required when you had such a condition. There's a lot of material and equipment that has to go into an eight-pound bag of flour, so to speak, and we're trying to get 10 pounds in. And they've done a great job, both in updating the equipment, putting equipment in, inboard to structures. The transformers will be encased in a three-sided concrete building, walled building, that will reduce the noise and protect them from a variety of different things, long-term interest of the public and their equipment mind. The switchgear is being totally updated and upgraded. There's some benefit due to technology and downsizing of control systems and that, but all of that is now going to be internally incorporated into a structure. Right now, it's all basically outside, and a couple of things are in little shed-type buildings. So with that in mind, and the 6,500 customers, that's residential office and retail. So like the Fred Meyer store would be one customer in that area. With that in mind, it's imperative that we try and get this up and done, so before the loads, because the load that is typically serviced from the substation is actually being picked up from several different substations in the area. The idea was to try and get it up and running in November, December, before the real cold weather hit and the typical loads that go up from darkness and lighting and heating and all that really hits. There was a concern that the existing facility would not last through the entire winter. So that's why we're going forward, bringing all the fences within the property line and separating all of the existing equipment to adequately meet all the electrical requirements from national and state and city level, has been a challenge, but they are met. We met with the community council. Chugatch Electric attended actually two different meetings there, and we had a positive result of 28 votes in favor, none against, to go forward. They did not like the previous wooden fence that was kind of the wall on Patterson Street. Part of that was because it was actually abutting the western edge of the bike trail. So you had this 15-foot-tall wooden structure right at the edge of the bike trail. This now puts the fence inboard to the property, so it gets a bit of separation now, and it'll be a shorter fence than what was right there. You can see that in the photos that we included in the package. One more thing in favor of going with a chain-link fence with screening slats is that, number one, the community basically said the wall was a real problem because it was being tagged and graffiti was on it all the time, and they wanted that gone. The actual chain-link and the plasticized slats actually are easier to clean and won't require repainting. Also, the wind load in East Anchorage is basically in the highest wind load district that we have in the city. I can hearken back to when the Fred Meyer was under construction, that we had a big storm that year. All of the styrofoam roofing material that had been ready to put onto the roof ended up towards midtown, and there were actually power poles along Muldoon Road that were broken like toothpicks. 150 mile-an-hour-plus winds are common when we have our winds that come down off the Chugatch. So the chain-link fence is a little bit more resistant to that problem. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. We've been working with the church property next door, and I don't have any problems with the three conditions of approval and recommendations made by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. You have three and a half minutes for rebuttal. Question for Mr. Strick, go ahead.
Yes, question to the Chair. I did note that there was no public comments received. Is that testament to the outreach that was done prior, or what are we seeing here?
It's a pretty active community council, pretty active neighbors. I'd say that it's a testament to going out and talking to them initially to let them know that there were some potential changes, and then having a formal presentation to them, and then letting them know what was really going on, and being ready and available to answer any questions that they had.
And I do note that in the additional information we received, the property to the west, is that the church?
That is the church property.
They appear to be willing to allow limited planning so long as it can be removed by the property owner if necessary or any reason whatsoever.
And it's actually gone a little bit further than that discussion, and I believe that there's a representative or will be a representative here tonight from the church and Chugatch Electric, and they are working on an agreement that would result in the landscaping being placed, subject to their plan and their landscape architect, so that it would be a further benefit to their adjacent property when they do any additional development, because that same landscaping would be required by them at that time.
Does that include maintenance of the same?
For the period of time that the warranty was there, and I believe that the church's interest has been a two- or three-year maintenance period, basically effectively warranting that the landscaping is taken care of.
So you're saying that if there was development work that took place at that site in the future, they could take credit then for that landscaping for their development?
Absolutely. It would be their landscaping for their development.
I like the idea, and I see that we're in a bind here in trying to appease the landscaping for this particular area, so it's great to see two adjacent property owners conjoin together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strick. I think that was going to be my question, if it had to do with, if this agreement is not yet reached, if this then landscaping ties you to the landscaping over which you have no control absent of, absent of that agreement being in place. I mean, I know you're working towards that, I just don't want, you know, Chugatch to get into an issue where this is part of the condition of approval, which I think it is now, right?
We have talked, in fact, I've talked to staff as late as today about that, and the most significant criteria is not necessarily the landscaping, the location of the landscaping because of how tight the site is. We've been able to move the fences onto property, but because of the electrical separation and grounding requirements, so we don't fry any pets or kids, it's necessary to have a three-foot clear zone around the exterior of the fence to service that from a national and state electrical standpoint. So with that in mind, there's really no space to adequately put the landscaping on this site. We need to get the construction done, and what staff has indicated is that we would continue to work, get the agreement with the church, and if the landscaping didn't get installed until next year, we just wouldn't get a final CO until that landscaping was in.
Okay. Can you, is the landscaping the only thing that you're not meeting at this point to sort of remain under the non-conforming application?
The landscaping, and I think we're about a, I think we were a foot short on the east boundary between the Patterson Street right-of-way and that. We only have four foot of setback rather than five feet.
See, there's a one-foot of difference, but you're, otherwise the fence is moved entirely onto the property.
Entirely on the property. Five feet in on the west boundary or the adjacent property, four feet in from the property line. And when you look at where the property line is... And when you look at where the property line is relative to where the wall used to be, about half to two-thirds of the area that you see in the plans or the aerial photos, that's where the switchgear was, is moved onto property, so that it's a significant change. So getting that wall down and out of there is a significant improvement.
Great.
And moves much closer to meeting the current requirements.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Potter before I open up for public hearing? All right. Three and a half minutes for rebuttal. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on case 2018-65, please come forward. Anyone at all? Could be your, like, practice, if you want. All right, Mr. Potter, any rebuttal? Oh, we got one, sorry, I missed it.
Good evening. My name is Howard Hanson, and I'm with MCA Church. I'm the chief operating officer of the church that abuts the property.
Can I get you to raise the mic just a little bit, sir?
And so I've been, we've been in discussion with Chugatch. I'd like to say that several things. Number one, we've been very pleased with Chugatch's willingness to reach out to us and talk to us about things. We do, we have reached, we've set forth to Chugatch Electric recently terms under which we would allow them to use part of our property for the landscape buffer. And the maintenance was talked about. Part of that, part of that is that we are asking that they would do the maintenance for three years on the property that is the landscaping that is added, and then we would continue the maintenance after that. We're also asking that instead of just the west property line, the line to the west of Chugatch's property, that they would also do landscape buffering on the south property line, which is shorter, just for contiguous and cohesive appearance. We're very interested in our, in our relationship with our neighbors as well as with Chugatch, and I think that the landscaping buffer would be especially pleasing to the neighborhood, and I think it would be something that we consider pretty important. I've been working with electrical power constructors, who are the contractors for Chugatch Electric, and they have been really super people as well. So overall, we're really pleased with where we've been so far in our discussions with them. It took a little while to get through the process of talking about what, for them to be able to use this landscape buffer, what the requirements from us would be, but we've hammered that out and we've given them that. And if they're willing to do that, we're more than willing to allow them to plant the landscape buffer.
Great. One question, a cue for Mr. Strike, go ahead.
And there's actually a reason I'm asking this, it may come out later, but in your conversations with Chugatch Electric, they were open, receptive, took your meetings.
Yes, very much so. As a matter of fact, offered to come to our board, our church board, or our, and we actually, I was in a meeting with our senior pastor and Chugatch Electric representatives who came out and explained to us exactly what they were doing. That was offered by them, and we thought that was really great.
Was that attended by other neighbors and other folks in the neighborhood?
That was not, that was just to help us to understand what the project was fully.
What about the rest of the neighborhood? Any feedback?
The, well, I've spoke, I mean, I have some conversation with some of the neighbors. We have, I feel like we have some pretty good relationship with a number of our neighbors, and I've not heard any negative feedback at all. I actually, I haven't had much, much in the way of a lot of feedback, but I think, yeah, yeah, I would have to say.
I appreciate it. It'll become more clear later if, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to testify? All right, Mr. Potter, three and a half minutes, rebuttal?
I think some rebuttal will be pretty, pretty short. If you could go to page 39 in your packet, and then 40 and 41, that gives you a pretty good idea. The middle photo.
Tim, can you bring the mic down a little bit, thank you? Sorry.
Yeah, okay, a little jumby found here, okay. As you can see in the middle picture, that's really a depiction of a 15-foot-high wooden wall that is directly at the back of the bike trail. And effectively, all that goes away and becomes a little bit of clear space adjacent to the bike trail, which is not only more aesthetic, but is probably much safer as well. And when you start looking at the rest of it, we don't have a problem with the landscaping on the north side in the discussion, and we don't have a problem with running the landscaping around the south side to the extent that we can and avoid conflicts with any of the electrical equipment there. So the continuity around the site is fine. You know, one interesting thing about this neighborhood is that, especially when Walmart was being debated, 11th and, well, 10th, 11th, and 12th did not want continuous traffic going through there. So along the west side of Patterson, those streets all have, not necessarily bollards in a sense, but they have big rocks, chunks of concrete, and other things that are closing those streets off in large part. So it's a pretty tight community, and you do have to come in from the west side in order to even get to this substation. So we're fine with the landscaping on three sides. We're fine with the maintenance period of being three years, and they'll take it over after that. They will be using their own landscape architect, according to the discussion that's been held and what's been put in writing. Elise Huggins with Earthscape, so we're confident that everything will work out real well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and so would the Chugatch people.
A question from Mr. Looney, go ahead.
Yes, I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned the site meets almost all conditions. A couple of examples where it doesn't is the landscaping and the setback. I guess on the east side, it's, you have a four-foot setback, and you would have required a five-foot setback like you have on the west side, is that right?
Yes.
I'm just kind of curious why you didn't make it five foot. I mean, like, for a 50-foot-wide enclosed fence, another foot wouldn't make a big difference, would it?
It's funny that you say that. I asked that question about 10 times, and I'll let Peyton Reed get up from Chugatch Electric and address that. But, yes, it, no.
Hello, I'm Peyton Reed from Chugatch Electric. So actually, it's because of the switchgear enclosure itself, on one side is the comm structure, the comm tower that actually does have an existing conditional use permit. And so you can't get too close to that. You need room to get between the comm structure and the switchgear enclosure. And then on the other side, you need room to work as well. So it's basically, if you go any closer with the fence, you would not have, we wouldn't have enough room to perform routine maintenance.
So essentially, the clearance to existing structure, you're talking about?
The comm tower's an existing structure. The switchgear is being moved.
That makes sense, okay. I'm sure there's a good reason.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Just in closing, as I indicated, the 10 pounds of flour in an eight-pound bag, Mr. Looney, it really is tight, and when you put some of the other design parameters on there from a safety standpoint, from a federal and state level, this, this one as far as you can possibly go to try and make it all work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing on case 2018-65, turn to deliberations. And again, I'll ask that we're looking at the conditional use standards, like some, also in addition to those conditional use standards, some specific conversation related to the approval criteria for replicating a non-conforming conditional use on page five, and the 10% criteria on page six, as well as those conditional use standards. So, at point, what's the wish of the body? Mr. Looney.
Okay, so in the case of 2018-0065, amendment to, to an existing conditional use to allow an upgrade to the utility substation, I move that we approve the request, based on the conditions set forth in the staff recommendations.
On page nine of the packet, great. Thank you, Mr. Looney. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Strike, would you like to speak to that motion?
Sure. It seems that the project is well-accepted by the neighborhood. It meets the conditions for the replicating of non-conforming conditions, and it moves towards better conformance with the zoning in pretty much every instance I could see. The actual, the positive outreach that the petitioner has made to the neighborhood and adjoining property owners is beneficial to this case.
Thank you, Mr. Looney. Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you. And to my point, I want to commend Chugatch Electric for their reach-out and their involvement. I've sat through three of these similar types, and I will tell you, and I'll be point-blank, MEA came in this chamber, and every time, there was a cram-down, and it was not receptive because they did not reach out to the community and hold the meetings and participate. So I'd like to commend Chugatch, either from learning from the past or for doing this, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I'm going to support the motion. I find that the case as proposed meets the conditional use standards to the degree that they can. There are a few standards that are not quite met, but they move in the direction of conformity. They've created a creative solution to the lack of landscaping and succeeded in not only moving the fence inbound on the site, but improving the fence in a way that is more aesthetically pleasing to the neighborhood. I'd also suggest that this does meet the approval criteria for replicating a non-conforming conditional use, and those are the standards of 211240D, and they have far exceeded the 10% threshold as a non-conforming use. Mr. Strike?
Yes, I would like to, I intend to support the motion as well, but in the department's recommendation, number three, number, item B, the language in there, a landscape plan showing the proposed landscaping on the abutting lot, if an agreement with the property owner can be reached, is to be provided to the planning department. This is, this is a condition. They have to present a agreement, not if an agreement. We can't fall back to say, no agreement was made, therefore, we still met that, that charge to provide it. So I believe we want to clarify in the language that it is a requirement that there be an agreement with the adjoining property owner for the landscaping.
Well, I think with that, I'd go to staff before we went there, but I just, just to sort of, as my read is that a landscape plan showing the proposed landscaping in the East 10th Avenue right-of-way, that's with or without the agreement of the property owner, right? That's fully within their discretion. I mean, that's, that's what the landscape plan will absolutely show.
If.
No, I mean, I just want to clarify that. They have control of it in the right-of-way. It's the abutting lot if an agreement can be reached. They don't have the agreement inked. I think, I would ask staff, if they didn't have the agreement inked, they would likely, this would just be part of the non-conforming use application.
Yes, but we don't want to incentivize Chugatch at this point not to reach an agreement. They would be incentivized not to reach one in this case.
I mean, I could counter that and say suddenly the, I mean, we heard from Mr. Hanson with the church, that was really realist, you know, really genuine, but if suddenly there was a change of leadership and they say, we're not going to work with them, then you've put Chugatch in a bind. There is no agreement.
Or Chugatch could come to the same realm with an approval and say, we tried, it was an if, so we tried, and in fact, they could put onerous and back out.
So I'm, I guess at this point, in order to speed things up, what I would suggest is if you have a specific amendment to the motion that you want to put out, whether it's scratching that word, that I'd sort of suggest a motion on the table and we can, we can.
Well, I think the motion would be that it's a requirement, and if they can't reach that requirement, they can come back before this commission.
Okay, so could you state that as an amendment to the main motion?
Staff, do you understand where I'm coming from on the language? Proposed language?
Through the chair, yes, I understand.
No, but any, what type of proposed language alternative might you suggest?
The alternative I would suggest is that the landscape plan shows the proposed landscaping in the East 10th Avenue right-of-way and landscaping on the abutting lot when an agreement?
Okay, that puts it out in the future.
That'd be the same thing.
You just dropped the last.
Just drop the last, if, just drop from if on, just drop it.
Yep, that would work.
Mr. Potter?
Okay, before you do, Mr. Potter, that's a motion. Is there a second to Mr. Strike's amendment to the main motion? There's a second for Mr. Looney. I'll, okay, Mr. Potter, response to the motion?
I just, for clarity's sake, I think everybody's working in good faith here. I understand what Mr. Strike is saying, and as long as it is a reasonable, good-faith landscape plan and requirement that meets the requirements and isn't broadly extreme, like, starting with 20-foot trees and, you know, full-grown things, I don't think he'll have a problem. So if the word reasonable could be worked into that, I would, I would feel better and think that it, it meets both. You know, we'll be reasonable on our part, the church will be reasonable on their part. Is it possible that one or the other could take advantage of the situation? It is possible, I would hope not. And if the easiest way to do this is to, if the church goes wacky because powers that be change hands and they want something grandiose and beyond what the code requires, we would probably need to come back. But as long as we can operate, get the system working, and then resolve that after the fact, I think we're okay with working this out with the neighbor. We think that they'll be reasonable and will be reasonable.
And I'm fine with the term reasonable, as long as it's worked through the staff, but just my point is, words mean something, and we've seen this type of situation come back before this commission in the past, so.
And my only point is that, you know, both sides.
Agree.
You know.
All right, I think we got it. I've got a lot of people here wanting to go. So I'm going to ask one more time, Mr. Strike, that you state, you state the motion to amend the way that you'd like it read. This is, this is, words matter, let's hear it.
I would propose that Section 3, Paragraph B, a landscape plan showing the proposed landscaping in the East 10th Avenue right-of-way and the proposed landscaping on the abutting lot 1A, Block 12, DeBar Vista subdivision. I'm going to go with the original motion, period. Period, just drop the.
There it is, there's a motion to amend. Could you please vote on the motion to amend the Department Recommendation 3B? The motion fails. We're back to the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak to the main motion? Would that please vote? Would that please vote? That conditional use is approved. Thank you, everybody. Next up, I believe we'll call this the main event, case 2018-66, request to rezone from R2M District to R3A District, 6.2 acres, generally located east of Arlene, southwest 88th, west of Northwood Street, and north of West Diamond Boulevard. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder, six vote, I'm sorry, five positive votes are needed in order to pass any motion. There's only six members here tonight, so if two commissioners vote nay, then the motion will fail. So, it's helpful for any no votes to not be silent when it comes time to vote. So, there are nine approval criteria for a rezone. For this case, approval criteria one is met. Anchorage does not have enough buildable land to accommodate future housing demands. The R3A District is one tool for dealing with this community-wide housing shortage. Approval criteria two is met. This six-acre site conforms to the locational requirements of the R3A District. The site is adjacent to West Diamond Boulevard, which is classified as a major arterial on the official Streets and Highways Plan, and Arlene Street, which is a collector. The site abuts public transit route on Arlene Street and West Diamond Boulevard. Also, Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map identifies the site as both compact residential medium and residential mixed use. The R3A is an implementing district for these land use designations. Pages 54 to 56 of your packet contain an excerpt from the issue and response summary for the 2040 Plan. The site was specifically called out as a location for the R3A District. So, I wanted to read from a portion of page 55 of your packet, this issue response summary. It says, northeast corner of Diamond slash Arlene Street, it doesn't say street, so Diamond slash Arlene. This is, this is to bring attend, to the attention of the commission, the draft 2040 Land Use, LUP, Land Use Plan recommends a change from the existing conditions of three lots on the north side of Diamond Boulevard, immediately west of Campbell Creek Greenbelt, and just east of Arlene-Diamond intersection. The draft 2040 Land Use Plan deviate adds the residential mixed-use development stipple overlay to the medium-density residential designation in order to allow for some commercial mixed-use features. The compact mixed residential-dash-medium land use designation with a stipple pattern would be implemented by a new medium-density residential zoning district. This district is near, is a near-term action in the 2040 Land Use Plan, action 2-6. A tentative acronym for this district is the R3A District. The subject parcel appears to be well-suited for the new R3A District. The district is envisioned, as envisioned, would be likely to provide an increased height above three stories in the new development. The increased dwelling unit counts, along with the potential for commercial uses, would presumably offset the known development constraints and costs associated with the site. This application is supported by Anchorage 2020 Policies 5, 7, and 11. The R3A is compatible with adjoining properties which are zoned B1A, R2M, and R1. The Campbell Creek Greenbelt lies east of the petition site. The R3A Residential Mixed Use District is compatible with the surrounding commercial, residential, and religious uses. The R3A District allows medium-density residential and limited commercial uses, which is ideal at this site along West Diamond Boulevard. Medium residential density is desirable where adjacent to street classification of major arterial three. Mixed-use developments are good for communities because they reduce sprawl, promote walkability, reduce auto-dependency, offer a variety of housing types, increase tax revenues, and have lower public utility, public infrastructure costs. Approval criteria three is met. The R3A District is a medium-density, mixed-use, multifamily district with gross densities of 15 to 30 dwelling units per acre, per gross acre. The R3A District is primarily residential, but allows a variety of compatible commercial and retail services or office uses, as identified in the Table of Allowed Uses. Approval criteria four is met. The R3A District is a residential district that allows limited commercial uses. The R3A District has district-specific standards which provide adequate buffering for adjacent properties. For instance, all buildings will be required to comply with the height transitions for neighborhood compatibility, which promotes building scale compatibility and exposure to daylight. Buildings in the R3A are limited to three stories in height. Building height increases above three stories, up to six stories, are possible by meeting certain requirements, like providing additional ground-level open space or transitioning the building scale where adjacent to lower-density residential zoning, and going through an administrative site plan review. The R3A has a section under the subheading Neighborhood Protections. Buildings over 40 feet in height are not permitted to cast shadows on residential properties and parks between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM on the equinoxes without an approved major site plan review to mitigate shadow impacts. Non-residential uses should be located along street frontages and away from property lines that abut lower-density residential areas. Outdoor commercial operations are not allowed in this district. Buffer landscaping of 15 feet is required along lot lines of lesser-dense districts. 250 square feet of open space is required for each dwelling unit. There are yard setback requirements, residential design standards in Chapter 7, and the multiple structures on one-lot standards as well, if there's more than two buildings. Approval criteria number five is met. The site is located within the Building Safety, Police, Fire, and Parks Service, Parks and Recreation Service areas. People move a route 65 runs down Arlene Street and West Diamond Boulevard. There's a bus stop adjacent to this site and another about a block away. DOT and the municipal traffic engineer approved a traffic impact analysis report which projects out to year 2027. This is on page 58 of your packet. The TIA requires Juliana Street to be improved to municipal standard. The median on Arlene Street would need to be extended 140 feet, and channelization of the left-turn lane would be required. Also, internal site design must allow for vehicle circulation to all four driveways and traffic calming must be implemented to discourage cut-through traffic. With these improvements, four intersections within the study area would operate at level of service C or better at all times of the day. Two intersections would operate at the level of service E or F, but this site, but this site would account for less than 10 percent of the expected delay at those two intersections. Approval criteria six is met. The R3A District will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. Development of the property will be subject to Title 21 site design requirements, as well as the building permit review process. The developer will have to provide a master grading and drainage plan for the whole property. Approval criteria seven is met. The petition site is a large tract of relatively flat land. Both multifamily housing and commercial uses are already present in the immediate vicinity. The site has good access to three streets. The department does not recommend creating a unique zoning district through special limitations on this property. There are already extensive regulations in this R3A District that promote compatibility with neighboring properties. Limiting residential density may be the result of the traffic impact analysis, but it should not be a requirement of this rezoning. Building height and site design is addressed through the R3A District-specific standards, the use-specific standards, the dimensional standards, and the development and design standards. For instance, limiting building height could result in the loss of open space on the property by forcing wider buildings and more surface parking, surface parking on the lots, on the lot. Approval criteria eight is met. Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map deliberately increased residential density at this site, given the well-documented need for housing in the community. Approval criteria nine is met. The rezoning will not create a split-zone lot. The department recommends approval of this rezoning from R2M to R3A. A assembly ordinance, a draft assembly ordinance is on page seven of your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Any questions of staff? Mr. Gardner?
Thanks. I wanted to confirm my understanding of how these traffic impact analyses work and will kind of play out. So, you mentioned the one on page 58 of the packet, and it looks like that's done based on a proposed 260-unit complex, and the report mentions that an updated traffic impact analysis will be done prior to development. So, is that, kind of, I guess my question is, what's the relation between the updated one and the one that was done in 2016 as the project advances?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or through the chair, Mr. Gardner, I think you, yeah, the wording's confusing there because it's very likely that they would have to revisit the traffic impact analysis when they actually have a design project. But if the project was exactly as it was proposed in the TIA that was accepted and approved by the DOT and the municipal traffic engineer, then those things, those constants would, they wouldn't need to redo the TIA. They're going to have to revisit the TIA. It'll have to be updated based, once they have a development plan.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Spinelli.
Yeah, through the chair. When the petitioner, assuming the rezone were to pass tonight, and the petitioner then moved forward with a permit to build something, it would, in the R3A, would they be guaranteed to go through, would there be another public hearing or a site plan review with a public hearing? Can you kind of just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Spinelli, there's sort of three tiers. If they develop it at a three-story height, and there's only two buildings, off, sort of off the top of my head, and under a certain number of dwelling units, then it would be a by-right development, it would just be a building permit. If they seek to go above three stories in height, then they would be subject to an administrative site plan review to review some of the criteria for building height increases that they would be seeking. And then, if they did three buildings or more and a certain number of dwelling units, then it would be subject to a major site plan review. So, there's, you know, it depends on what they end up building. And this is the time where we're actually looking at, is the zoning appropriate for this site? Is the R3A District the appropriate zoning for this location? You know, we don't have an actual development plan before us.
The major site plan review, that involves a public hearing?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, that's a good question. As we go through public hearing, if you could just, just kind of nail that down again, what the threshold is to kick in a major site plan review, that'd be really helpful to me. Any other questions of staff? Okay, none for now. At this point, we're going to open the public hearing, starting with the petitioner. Please come forward, state your name for the record, and let us know if you'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal.
I'd like to reserve seven minutes. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, planning staff, and members of the public. I'd like to reserve seven minutes for rebuttal. My name is Tom Drayer, I'm with the S4 Group, and I represent the petitioners tonight, Nor de la Chelsea LLC. Also with me tonight is one of the owners, Mr. Walter Wilcox, Michael Bullock, Brandon Marcot, civil engineer with Triad Engineering, and Mr. Randy Kenny, traffic engineer with Kenny Engineering, for your questions and answers. In summary, we concur with the professional planning staff analysis and the department recommendation of approval. Brief history on this project. In 2015, the owners developed plans that were approved for an 108-unit fourplex-style layout that conformed with the R2M zoning. In 2016, we submitted a rezoning to R4A with special limitations that would have limited the building height and the number of units allowed. The planning department at the time informed us that they were in the process of creating a new zoning classification that became known as R3A. The R3A zoning was in many ways very similar to what we were proposing as the R4A with the special limitations. We agreed to wait for them to go through the public process that created the new zoning classification. These processes, of course, included public comment through the community councils, the planning zoning commission, public hearings, multiple, and the final assembly approval of the new zoning classification of R3A. In January of 2018, the assembly approved the new R3A zoning classification. In other words, we have spent a little over three years to get to this meeting tonight. On page 27 and 28 of your packet, which is page one of the AO that approved the R3A zoning, there's a list of the whereas's that the Anchorage Assembly published that very concisely state the reasoning for their approval. The second from the bottom, whereas refers to the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan. The Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan map on page 31 of the plan specifically denotes this parcel as compact mixed residential medium with an overlay of residential mixed-use development. The residential mixed-use development areas further defined on page 65 and 66 of the 2040 Plan. The preferred zoning for this district is listed on page 66 as R4A and R3A. The plan goes on to state, "This growth-supporting feature promotes medium-to-high-density housing opportunities combined with commercial mixed-use retail office lodging, other services, and coordinated public infrastructure investment to create a mixed-use neighborhood. The goal of this feature is to retain and grow local housing capacity, not erode the residentially-zoned land supply. Residential mixed-use development allows for an increase in density and scale of development over the base designation. Where it overlays neighborhood land use designations, this growth-supporting feature provides flexibility to integrate mixed-use into residential development, while recommending minimum residential densities consistent with the underlying residential designation. In all areas, buildings are oriented to the streets with windows, entries, and balconies, and have strong pedestrian-bicycle connections with nearby neighborhoods, business districts, and amenities." Strategy six of the 2040 Plan. As a note, see pages 75 and 76 of the 2040 Plan, strategy six calls for reducing barriers to individual rezonings that property owners may bring forward that conform to the land use plan map, such as assist applicants navigating the rezoning process as described in strategy five, reduce entitlement application and permit fees through a municipal ordinance, and importantly, amend the Title 21 rezoning process to reduce unnecessary barriers while retaining the integrity of the public process. The West Anchorage District Plan classifies the Emerald Parcel as medium-density up to 40 dwelling units per acre. This equates to 300 dwelling units under the currently existing zoning. It should be noted that when an area-specific plan differs from the 2040 Plan, the 2040 Plan is a deciding factor. This here is a project for all of Anchorage. We have submitted signatures of support for this rezone that we submitted from Anchorage residents from many areas and parts of Anchorage, many of whom would like to move into a development like this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Five minutes, 15 seconds for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions for you. First, Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. You mentioned a project for all Anchorage, and, but there's no active development plan in place currently?
Correct, yeah. Well, we have actually a website for this. We've had it up for, we gave it to the community about maybe eight months ago, and it shows a plan that we kind of base some things on, like the traffic report and, and things like that, but it's, it's just an example of what someone with R3A zoning there could build.
Has the...
Eventually, it'll probably change by quite a bit.
Has the developer, the petitioner, built anything here in Anchorage in the past?
Um, yes, correct.
What type of large facilities have they developed, developed in the past?
I'd like to bring Mr. Mike Bullock up for that.
State your name for the record, too.
My name's Mike Bullock. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. So, I have been, I was born and raised in Anchorage, and I've built, just recently, I built a 43,000-square-foot mall on Diamond.
Say that again?
Just recently, I built the Gallo Center. It's across from Costco. It's like 43,000 square feet.
You were the developer or the general contractor?
Yes, I was a contractor.
Not the developer, you were the general contractor, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And then I've built other buildings. I built, I built a mall on the corner of Old Seward and Diamond, the Bella Vista Mall.
Speak up.
So I built a mall on the corner of Diamond and Diamond Old Seward, it's the Bella Vista Mall. So I've built probably four or five different large commercial buildings in town.
What was the name of your company?
It's Diamond Construction.
Mr. Strike, I just, just-
I'm trying to ask if we've got a developer-
I understand, but who the contractor is, is not, is not relevant to our zoning decision.
Well, I didn't know if he was an employee or owner of the company, or is he a developer or in what context?
That's not one of my criteria, who builds it.
So the development plan that's in place that you're envisioning here, I see verbiage here that talks about a seven-story, I see limitations, a three-story. What is your vision here as to the height?
Like Tom was saying, we have a website that has a vision of what myself and Walter Wilcox here would like to see for that corner. And from the beginning, we were thinking probably the best use would, instead of going wide, we want to go up so we can have open spaces, connectivity through the neighborhood to the park.
So I didn't get an answer to the question, other than to look at a web page?
What's the question again?
You envision, I see verbiage here that talks about a seven-story structure.
Right.
I see other verbiage that talks about a three-story structure.
No, I think Tom was just talking about example of what the R3 zoning today, that you could build without having another site plan. Right? Is that right, Tom, by zoning?
Yeah, 30 feet is the maximum.
So I'm trying to get and ascertain what your vision here for development on this property, what you're looking to-
Well, what we're looking, what we're talking about potentially building is three or four six-story buildings with stores and restaurants underneath.
Okay. All right, hold on. Listen, this is, if this goes like this, we're going to be here all night. And in fact, we might push it to another meeting. But listen, when someone is up at the mic, I would appreciate no comments, no big sighs, no clapping, no nothing. It's time to be respectful to who is up here. No, you don't get to comment on it. You're welcome to come forward during your testimony, that's it.
I thought it was about you.
No, enough. I've seen the website, I've done my research, and I've read the packet, but you're not to engage in us until you come up to the mic, or we're going to be here all night.
So, Mr. Strike, have you seen the website that Mr. Robinson saw?
Yes, I have. I wanted-
That's, that's kind of what we envisioned for that corner.
The website isn't testimony. I wanted you to stipulate it here.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any more questions?
I have Mr. Spinelli in the queue, please.
Yeah, do you know how many dwelling units you could fit on the site currently?
I think it's 106, right? It's 106 or 107 with the R2M.
Yeah. That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Gardner?
I'm sorry, I just didn't catch the answer to that last question.
106 was the calculation based on what, the number of dwellings per acre in the R2M? Is that right, Tom?
Right. It's pretty close.
Okay. Any other questions before we open up for public hearing? All right. Apologies for my grouchiness earlier, but I would like to sort of ask that as the public comes forward, first of all, that whoever is speaking next after the person at the mic, that you sort of come down, that we don't wait until the person is gone until we get in line, so sort of queue up next, at least one or two people there. State your name clearly for the record. If it's an unusual spelling, help us out and spell your last name for us. We will cut you right off at three minutes or five minutes, whatever it is, so that we're fair to everybody. So the little trick here is that when you see the middle light, the yellow light that goes off, you have a minute left, and three minutes goes super fast. And then I would finally say, our role here tonight is to evaluate whether this application meets the specific standards that staff outlined. That's what we're reviewing, not, not whether we like blue or gray or green, it's the standards that are there. So if you look at those, the sort of trick is to direct your testimony to those standards that helps us make a good decision. So with that, anyone wishing to testify, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Robert Hayes, and I've been past president of the Sand Lake Community Council for two years, way back. And way back, this project came up to us, and we voted on this to give them the commercial and lower level and total of three stories for the project, from going from duplexes and fourplexes. I think that was very fair, very generous. We did this because previously, we had an individual that came and said, "I want to build two apartment buildings over by Northwood and Raspberry." And we said, "Okay, well, what's it going to be like? Well, I'm going to try to make it look nice and everything, and it's going to be three stories with a lower garage." And we said, "Well, everything else in the area is three stories, and we think it's fair to say, you can have our support." He did a great job, we love, we love what he did, it looks very nice, and that's what we do in our community council. We try to be fair, we try to do good things. We've, we helped the Diamond High School get their soccer field finished when it was, ran out of money, and it was a pile of dirt. We've had the people in the sand pits, we've had their well water tested through state funding. We do good things. This, this project that came up, we had a meeting in the spring, and this group came up and said, "Hey, well, you guys approved us to go seven stories." We said, "What the hell are you talking about? We said three stories way back, and that's what, that's what we expect you to do." And they said, "No, no, there was a meeting in July." And we said, "Well, July? We don't have meetings in the community council. We take off June, July, and August." There was an emergency meeting, which we call emergency meeting, to have these guys get an approval, which is disgusting to me. It's, it's, you know, we don't do things like this in our community council. So anyway, we were surprised and shocked, and we said, "No, that's not, that's not what we gave you." So then they said, "Yeah, yeah, we had the meeting, and it wasn't, it was dishonest, you guys were deceived." Okay? All right, so, and the other things about this, this location is a beautiful park. Anything over three stories is just too much. There's a, there's a lake that has air traffic. We don't need seven stories where airplanes might hit something in bad weather. You know, well, that's, I call this project the Pebble Mountain of Anchorage. It's just a terrible project. You can't trust these people. There's a huge red flag that's going up, saying, "What is going on here?" The community council said, "Three levels is the way you can do it. We've had that in the past everywhere the neighborhood gets three levels." You know, you don't need, you don't need to go over three levels. And that's, that's, I'll make it quick, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis, can I, are you in the queue for this specifically, or something else?
Just to respond to your question earlier.
I'll come back to you. Any questions for the testimony? Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Good evening, my name is Art Clark. I'm a real estate broker here in Anchorage. I'm also a resident of the Jewel Lake area. I do not want to speak to this project, whatever this project turns out to be. I do want to speak to the rezoning. I think the rezoning is very important for the city of Anchorage. I understand that there's going to be a time, at some point in the future, where this project can be discussed much more appropriately. This zoning, as I've been a member of the Live, Work, Play Housing Committee for AEDC, and we are facing a major shortfall in properties for people to live in, in the future in Anchorage. This zoning is appropriate for the area, and I just want to say that I support it very strongly.
Thank you for your testimony. And just grab the mic and bring it up a little bit, thanks.
Hi, my name is James Shook. I live on 9106 Arlene Street, which is right across from this development. Currently, we have our house up for sale, and not because of this development, because we moved to the valley. And we had an interested buyer for our house, and they bailed as soon as they found out about this project. I've lived in this area for my whole life, and I think it's ludicrous to put anything over three stories. I think the traffic impact hasn't been studied correctly. I've lived there for six years at the address, and most of the time when school's in, you can't even get out of the driveway. So without the Northwood being considered as an opening to eliminate some of the stress, I would not put anything there until further study is done on the current traffic issues. And I just completely say no, I think it's completely ludicrous, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Can you spell your last name for us?
Shook, S-H-O-O-K.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mark Offit, that's A-A-F-E-D-T. I own the property right next to James's, 9044 Arlene. It's duplex, built it in 2011. I'm a general contractor in town. I'm all for development. In this case, though, if it's 106 units, they said they got approved in 15 or 16 or could've, and then hardship now, two years later, they're asking for over double the units that they want to put in now. I'm not really sure how, what kind of hardship that was. And the rezoning here, maybe, obviously, Anchorage needs it at some point and to fill it in, but in this case, with the traffic there, like James said, there's, during school hours, I don't know if that study was done during school when it was going on, there's 15- to 30-minute wait regularly. I mean, I don't know if the, whatever they build there, if they had a right turn only, and exited heading north, and went all through the neighborhood, I don't know. But the way it is now, it will not work what's there, it just, so whoever did the rezoning, or I guess the city says they recommend it, I don't agree. They ought to live there when school's on.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Margaret Wilkinson, W-I-L-K-I-N-S-O-N, and I live in the area. I have been watching this development through the Sand Lake Community Council for a number of years. I believe this is the wrong place for what may be a good solution to Anchorage, but this particular corner is a residential area with a park, with a creek. Seven stories high, and six buildings, and a total of 260 residential units, is beyond my comprehension, and it's a lot of numbers, and it's hard for me to imagine how this multiplies into people, cars, garbage, pollution, traffic. And so here's how I understand these differences that are being discussed. Imagine a building like the Alaska Club Building that's on the corner of Diamond and Jewel Lake Road, if you're familiar with that one, or the North Rim Bank Building across the street from it. Those buildings are between two and two and a half stories tall. Most of the, the buildings in that area are no more than three stories tall. Some of them are a lot shorter. And then compare that, those buildings, to the Penny's Parking Garage. The Penny's Parking Garage and the City Hall are six stories high. That's the difference between two stories and six stories. I attended junior high school where the Performing Arts Center now resides, and during the time I was attending school there, City Hall was built. Suddenly, our bathrooms were eye to eye with City Hall, and our, there was a shadow over our building. I remember that well. I don't want to go through that again in this residential area. Anchorage has many needs, and they're difficult to plan for, and I commend the Assembly for listening to the community and weighing out the best use of each piece of property. Building an enormous structure that will diminish the value of the property on all sides of it, cast shadows over the adjacent property, and cause an increased crowding of the schools, and a glut on the roadways is not using our resources wisely. Please don't allow this rezoning request to proceed. As a size comparison, put your hand down to the top of your socks. That's a two-story building. Now raise your hands above your head. That's a seven-story building. Let's not do that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Frederick, F-R-E-D-E-R-I-C-K. I am here tonight in total opposition to the proposed change in zoning. This type of structure might definitely work in some other parts of town, but for the first one that they're going to be building to be put in this place, it's just, it just doesn't fit. And for us, it's going to be an eyesore, no matter how it is described as slender and beautiful buildings. There was a piece in Sunday's paper in the real estate section by Connie Yashamura, and I actually talked with her last night and invited her to this meeting, but she wasn't able to come. She's been in real estate for many, many years, and actually, she was chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board. She wrote the article that this idea of young people or the millennials wanting to live in large towers downtown urban areas was a myth, that statistics are showing that first-time home buyers are looking for the same types of home that they grew up in, single-family housing, or duplexes, that kind of thing. So all in all, it just seems that for us to be the test case just seems wrong. This building just doesn't fit in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Cindy Kroon, K-R-O-O-N, and I'm just reiterating pretty much what everybody else has said. I am understanding that Anchorage is having growing pains, but there are other places that are more appropriate. Just down the road would be a perfect lot for this. We're not opposed to change, just in our area, we're 503 feet from this out our front window. And I'm worried also about getting in the middle of this type of project, and it being so large, I've seen them where they've run out of money, and get in the middle of it, and it's half-done, it's kind of half-baked. And my, my parents were huge developers, as a matter of fact. My parents developed that area, and they made that Green Belt Park to be a park, which I believe myself could be destroyed by this. And everything runs downhill, and from that lot they're talking about, the creek is right down here, and they're wanting to put in underground parking spaces, and 400 of them, to be exact. And they say there'll be a 200, 2,200 car, more cars in the area than are there now, and oh my gosh, it is already so packed, it's not funny. I feel sorry for everyone on Arlene and on Juliana Street, most especially Hope Cottage that is there. And, you know, there's just so much on this. I've been told the soil tests were not good. This is going back seven years that I know of, not with this developer, but with other people trying to do the same thing. And Juliana always came into play. I'm afraid those people could be losing parts of their front lawns and stuff, because it's just a one-road, you know, area. So you know how we all feel, it's just not the place to try to walk around and bike around with that much congestion coming up. And I had a question, how many units does an R3A allow on one parcel of land?
After the testimony, we might respond. Go ahead, wrap up.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So I'll go back to you, Francis, and get the site plan review, and then give us the, if there's a unit cap on the zoning, maybe after this lady testifies. Hi.
My name is Denise Offit, A-A-F-E-D-T. You already heard from my husband, and we built and own the home at 9044 Arlene. We are right, the bus stop that is existing at this corner is in front of our property. And I would like to know when the traffic study was conducted. Can anyone, is that an appropriate question to ask? What time of year?
Yeah, just, you can lay your questions out, but I just want to make sure, is that, if you're done with your testimony?
As already mentioned many times, our concern primarily is the traffic impact- As already mentioned many times, our concern primarily is the traffic impact because anyone that is remotely familiar with this area knows that it's already overused. The high school, nine months out of the year, there's times of day it's very difficult even to turn right out of the driveway, forget about going left. And it's hard to imagine the impact that adding over 200 units plus businesses that could be open from early hours to who knows what time of the evening. So that's my main concern. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And probably what's most appropriate, there is, they've included a TIA report from September of 16. I didn't know, when you said the time of year, is that what you meant, or when was conducted?
The school year, which would be, you know, August.
Yeah, no, they contemplated, but I'm going to, I'm going to actually, it's very likely, hearing the number of traffic issues and knowing that their traffic consultant is here this evening, they'd be wise to bring up their traffic consultant during the rebuttal period.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Jason Grant. I'm a lifelong resident in the Jewel Lake/Sand Lake area, and I'm speaking for myself and not in any other official capacities that I have. I am currently opposed to the plans for tract one in the Emerald subdivision that have been shared by the developer. Current plans on the website estimate the development will triple the daily traffic in an area already plagued by congestion, move more drivers into quiet established neighborhoods, remove a popular community sledding hill, and create the tallest buildings for miles around. Two years ago, plans presented for this lot were less impactful in the surrounding neighborhood. They did not remove the sledding area, they did not use Juliana Street as a thoroughfare, and they did not include buildings as high as seven stories. Municipal Resolution Number 2017-031 from December 4th, 2017 states, "Whereas Anchorage 2020 encourages residential mixed use provided that the development maintains or improves the functional and aesthetic characteristics of the surrounding area and maintain or improves adjacent transportation access and traffic flow." I believe that the current plans for the Emerald Hills development do not fit this description. As Anchorage and its residents look towards the future and find housing-assured solutions, I believe that R3A zoning can be beneficial, even in our area of town. But like any development project, it must be a good fit with the character of the existing neighborhood and bring an overall benefit to the community. Again, I believe the current plans for the Emerald Hills development do not fit this description. In short, I oppose the existing plans from the website. Significant increases to traffic with plans to push drivers into quiet side streets, building height and density concerns, removal of a popular community sledding hill, and the potential for lower property values should all be considered serious reflects and the plan should be rejected. Thank you.
I had a question for you. Thanks for your testimony. The sledding hill that you're talking about, where's that?
So that is, there's a parking lot for the Candle Creek, that Green Belt. It's the hill that is probably 150 feet east of Arlene on the corner directly across from the Skinny Raven store.
So it's west of the parking lot, so the...
It's west of the flat area of that park, towards Skinny Raven in the corner of Arlene and Diamond.
And by removing it, so it's exclusively on private property then? Is that why we're talking about removing it? It's not in the park itself?
No, I believe looking at the plans that it would be developed over and that sledding hill would no longer exist for park users.
The sledding hill is part of the private, it's a private lot that's being used for community, but it's not part of the park, right? That's what you're...
I believe so. I think that's correct.
Okay. There's another question for you, Mr. Spinelli.
Yeah, through the chair. So you said several times you reject or you oppose the development on their website, but we're here for the R3A rezone tonight. Are you opposed to the rezone?
I think if the plans were, if they scaled back from what was originally discussed several years ago, and that included an R3, I think there could be, there could be some potential for that. I think the plans have expanded to really outsize what is beneficial and good for the community at large. I think, you know, originally 100 dwellings with a much smaller traffic impact could make sense for our area of town with work with the residents who live in that direct part. But if it meant going to seven stories, if it meant to the number of dwellings at the R3A, if that was kind of a combination, I would also be opposed to the rezoning as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, I'm Chris Borst, G-E-A-N-E-S. I'm a resident on Juliana, has been for over 20 years, and my concern is traffic. Juliana is a barren street that runs into the zoning area, and it's raining as long as it is, and the rainy traffic we have now are residents. And my concern is now coming walking to the end of my driveway to check my mailbox, I have to be alert for traffic to be in here. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Chris Borst. My last name is spelled B-O-R-S-T. I appreciate the fact that you're taking the time to listen to everyone and their concerns. Once upon a time, the land there was already zoned for construction. I think that the neighbors that are in the area realize that something is inevitable, something is going to come. And I don't think there's necessarily great opposition to that. I think what you're finding is there's great opposition to the rezoning because of what could be, the unknown, the idea that you could put seven-story buildings in a fairly compact area in addition to then bringing in lots of cars and the impact that will directly have on our schools. All of the schools that are right in the Diamond High School area, Diamond High is currently at 100%, as well as Sand Lake, Chinook are both now over 100%. Mears Middle School has been very close along with Gladys Wood for some time. So we're, you know, there's great concerns there. Hopefully, given the, that the fact that nine conditions were read earlier, it's not a foregone conclusion that this will pass, that you, that it's not predicated and that you are listening to the grave concerns of the folks that live in the area. These neighbors don't have visual aids, they don't have websites, they have their common sense, their personal investments. This is where their livelihoods have been put in. This is probably the greatest investment that they'll ever have in their lifetime, right here in their homes. And understandably, they have great concern over what's possible. You know, some of the attributes that have been thrown out for this as well within some of the, to step up and change his own is potentially that this could be a walking and biking area. And Anchorage is an arid climate, and I'm not sure that why construction right there on this corner all of a sudden makes this a walking area other than there's proximity to a grocery store in Fred Meyer. You know, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, would make this particular location a better spot. So, you know, and members of, that have been at several of the last Sand Lake Community Council meetings have been largely opposed to this. I think there was an impression that it was, that was not the case, but that is currently based on the makeup. You know, and as you can see by the volume of attendees here, this is a big decision and it's not supported by the community. I don't think it's a bad idea, I think it's a bad location. You know, there's no construction with miles of what is being proposed. And, you know, as stated earlier, no known comments were put out there with Chugatch Electric and what they had going on, and it was shown as a testimony support. You know, this is obviously demonstrating to the contrary here. It's not well accepted by the neighborhood and specifically the adjacent property owners. You know, I think they have, like I said, I think they have great concerns, and I know that they all appreciate the fact that you're listening to them and giving them their due. So, thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Appreciate it.
My name is John Heebner, H-U-E-B-N-E-R. I live at 8831 Juliana Street. Been there for 29 years. I am adamantly opposed against the attempt to rezone this property for a second time. To place this proposed seven-story high-rise development directly adjacent to a small, well-established neighborhood of single-family homes would be devastating to these Anchorage residents. It would be particularly devastating to the residents of Juliana Street. There's 15 of us. As the rezoning would make Juliana a through street from 88th to Arlene. Juliana Street is currently a short dead-end street that consists of single-family homes and a specialized healthcare assisted living facility ran by Hope Cottages. The increase of traffic from the residents and patrons of this proposed development and also from the cut-through traffic that would occur to avoid Arlene and 88th four-way stop would be disturbing and overwhelming to this small residential street. This added traffic would result in vehicles being backed up on Juliana trying to exit on 88th, given the fact that Juliana is only 280 feet from the four-way stop at Arlene and 88th. And Flamingo Street to the north side of 88th is only 150 feet away from the four-way stop. This situation would make it even harder for Juliana and Flamingo residents to enter and exit 88th. I have witnessed many near-vehicle pedestrian misses at both these intersections. It is already difficult to exit Juliana. This property was previously rezoned to allow the higher-density housing. The rezoning called for lower buildings and the development to be fenced off. A fenced-off development could still allow for pedestrian traffic and wildlife to pass through and get back to the park or wherever everybody goes. Rezoning for the purpose of connecting it to Juliana Street for vehicle traffic and taller buildings is unfair to this community. In summary, the established neighborhood is not the proper place for this proposed development. This request to once again rezone should be denied. And I was reading the developer's website, they talked about how if they make this larger, if we go with this zoning, it would, it would make the development inclusive. Well, I don't think, there's one person on Juliana Street that wants to be inclusive to the point where Juliana Street is a driveway to this place. And they say it, that, I think the only reason they want Juliana to be inclusive is because if they build this many units and this tall, they're going to need another access.
I think we got it, yes.
And I don't think Juliana, the 15 people of Juliana Street shouldn't be the front of this.
Your time's up, sir. I think we heard that testimony loud and clear. Thank you. I'm going to ask, I've been asked for a break up here, okay? So if I could, can you guys say one, two, three? You're the first up, one, two, three, but we got to take a five-minute break, okay? So let these three people go next when we come back, and then we'll keep going with the testimony. So we've been going for a little bit. We're going to take a five-minute. Thanks. Everyone can settle back in. And my one, two, three that were standing up there, if you can go, get ready. I think there's some questions. We're out of packets out front. Is that what's going on? Is there a way to direct people to look at things if they have a tablet or anything on the wifi? Do you know how to direct people to do that if they're out of packets?
Through the, Mr. Chair, if you want to look at the case online, you'd go to municipal meetings, Google, you know, muni meetings, and then click on Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda, and then click on this case, and you'd get all the documentation for this case.
So I know it's not ideal if you've got a small phone, but if you at least got something bigger and you want to try it and you can't find it and you're on the wifi, go over there and they'll help you get on there. All right. You're on the spot as IT technicians tonight, too. All right, next up, wishing to testify, come on forward. And can I just say, you shared with me that, you know, you just, why don't you just ask people to say who's yea and who's nay? And we could do that. But partly what we want to hear again is, our job is to look at the specific criteria, not whether people like something or don't like something. So we want to hear specifically why it is that you're testifying either in support of or against. So that's why we kind of make you all come up here. So, next up, or send us written comments as well.
My name is Christine McKay, and I've lived within four blocks of this intersection since 1985. My children attended Sand Lake and Mears and Diamond High School. I'm opposed to the zoning change for pretty much the same reason that everybody else in the neighborhood is, too much traffic, schools are already at or over capacity, and I just, it's overbuilding for the neighborhood. And it's interesting that all the people that signed on this approval petition sheet that was out there, a great majority of them don't even live anywhere near this neighborhood. So of course they're for it because it's not going to affect their lives every single day. And I just, I guess I just wanted to go on the record that I've been here for 33, almost 34 years, and this is just way overbuilding. I would be for a two or a three-story building. I would really be for something that was senior housing, 55 or older. Other than that, that's all I wanted to say, and thanks for listening.
Great, thank you.
Hello. My name is Brian Miller, and I live at 8921 Forest Village. I'm right around the corner from the property that we're talking about tonight. I've heard, I've heard a lot of people tonight talk about how much they think this kind of zoning is a good idea, and I agree that it is. And the arguments against mostly seem to be not in my backyard, which, you know, I kind of get, but it's got to be in somebody's backyard if we're going to try this. I think this is a really good solution for the kind of housing problems that we have in Anchorage, and as someone who lives in the neighborhood, I think, you know, everybody seems to think that it's going to lower their property value. I'm not really sure I see that. I look forward to the diversity of the retail part of this development if it works out that way. I think that would be a good selling point for the neighborhood, and I support the zoning change for those reasons.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corolla Kunz, and I'm a neighbor.
Could you spell your last name for us?
K-U-N-Z.
Thanks.
And I'm a adjacent neighbor, and first of all, I want to show you again what we are talking about here. So I'm specifically against that rezoning, and one reason is that I'm a adjacent neighbor, so one-third of my house actually is a neighbor with that property. The other two-thirds are with a field, with a Green Belt. So the setbacks with the trees to the existing housing, single-family housing are far not enough. It says 15 feet setbacks, that is nothing, nothing to protect us. Our property value will go down. It's already, you heard already, somebody could not sell their house. It's a seven-story building. What about our privacy? Would you like to live next to a seven-story building? I don't think so. And like that gentleman before me said, not in my backyard. Yes, very much so, not in my backyard. Three-story, fine, everything, single-family houses, condos, whatever. The noise level from the parking lot, if you look at that sheet, I mean, it's ridiculous. We have, we will have a parking lot basically in our backyard. Shadows from buildings year-round, what about the wintertime? The masha in the summertime, there is no shadows, sure. Sun is high up, wintertime, we are already in the dark. Traffic, people, mansion, already. I'm driving Arlene four times a day, and the traffic is backed up during schooltime all the time. Fans property, I'm very much so for that. It would ever will be built there. It needs to be fenced because people will walk to the unfenced properties of the single-family house owners. And so far, there is no commitment from the investor as what the housing will be. Will it be apartments with just tenants in there? Or will it be homeowners or condo owners, which would be better, and it would be better for the neighborhood? So I'm against the rezoning.
Thank you for your testimony. Hi.
Hi. My name's Stacy Dayley, D-A-Y-L-E-Y. I actually do not live immediately in the neighborhood. I'm over on Emerald, which is closer to Jewel Lake, the lake itself. But I did, when my boys were little, live on Lavanna, which is off Flamingo. And, you know, my older son just graduated from Diamond, my younger son's at Diamond. We've been in the area for 20 years, and that intersection is a nightmare. And it's not just during school hours, it's anytime there's a school event, anything in the area. I can't even imagine putting three-story buildings there and bringing 120 units into that neighborhood because the traffic situation is already horrible. I mean, I, I mean, I did it, and I'm still doing it. And I just, I, if the current zoning is for... is for three-story buildings, I think I even am against that. So that's, you know, all I really want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Hamel, H-A-M-E-L, and I live on Arlene Street. I won't even address the traffic issue, we all know what that's like. We've been begging for speed trap, or speed bumps on that street for years. My concern is the offices, the retail, and the restaurants that they want to, that they're proposing to put on the property. What about the noise level from that? They don't stop at the same hours that we do. We come home from work at five or six o'clock at night. Restaurants and offices and stores stay open later, so there's that. There's the increased people from all over town coming there to shop and do things, so there's that level. And also the schools. I mean, my grandkids go to Chinook. Chinook is at capacity. My sons went to Diamond. Diamond was, was full then. I've lived in the area for forty years, and I'm, I'm for development. I've been in Alaska since before statehood. I realize that we do have a housing problem with more people coming in, but I think this really needs to be revisited of the type of zoning that, that should go there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, my name's Matt Gupel, G-A-U-P-E-L, and I live at eight-nine, four-two Juliana. My property butts right up to this place. Leave what they want to build alone, but it comes down to the Assembly kind of botched this three-A zoning. They don't put enough protections in there for existing homeowners like myself. The, what do they call it? The Northern Climate Weather Protection and Sunlight. Buildings taller than forty feet shall not cast shadows on residential properties, dedicated neighborhood use parks, or school properties between nine and three on the equinoxes. It says, properties in the, proposed buildings that would cast shadows on properties in an R1 or R2 district between nine AM and three PM solar time from September twenty-first to October twenty-first shall be subject to a major site plan review process to mitigate shadow impacts. Mitigate? Excuse me? That's my property. You shade my property, you're going to cut my property value. They need to come back and change the wording in this. There's another one in here about aesthetic views, mountains, lakes, whatnots. It says, they struck out value of the view and put in the importance. There again, it does nothing to protect existing homeowners. I really think you as a group need to kind of go back and see if you can't get them to modify some of this to give existing homeowners in these areas protections. Because the way this is written, we have none. And I'm just after to protect my own values. I understand they're going to develop this site, that's fine. Not against development, I just don't want to get run over in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Kuns, K-U-N-Z. It takes a lot for me to come to these meetings. I don't like coming to these meetings. And this is a lot. I don't really have anything set to say. I mean, pretty much everybody's said it. When I walked in, you know, I saw this, this agenda with the petition. I looked at the names, I looked at the zip codes. Petition, the wording on the petition was vague, and it was, sure, you're going to sign it. You walk up to somebody at the Fifth Avenue Mall for a mountain view, why not? Sure, I'll sign it. But we had a community council meeting, it was February fifth of this year, and when the members there were present, those plans were shown, I don't know, powerpoint or something like that, they were shown up on the board, and there was an audible gasp. There was, my gods, oh my, no, not this. So we had, we took up a vote for what, to approve these plans. So this is what the zoning was possible with this zoning. And the vote to approve the plans was five yes, or four yes, no, I got it, right here in the minutes, four yes, twenty-five no, and three abstains. So the people that saw what can happen to our neighborhood are strongly, overwhelmingly against it. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Madison, and I live on Juliana Street. I just wanted to say thank you for listening to all of us and our concerns. My biggest concern, of course, is the safety. My children grew up on Juliana. My grandchild is growing up on Juliana, and the safety of the kids is my biggest concern. If they punch out Juliana, it's going to increase traffic on our street, take away from our, our front yards, and again, the safety of the children in that area is my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm JR Wilcox, I think I'm part of the project petitioner. I don't want to eat into the.
You would be eating into your time.
So I'll keep it real brief.
No, you would be, we'd have to, we have to wait until you come up and run it as part of the, part of the clock. So when, when the petitioner comes up for rebuttal, you're, yes, Francis, go ahead.
I, I, just for the consideration of the commission, Walter Wilcox is the owner and he is the applicant. I looked it up per the business, the corp, division of corp, division of corporation, I looked up the ownership of the, of the property, and JR Wilcox does not, the gentleman that's at the microphone, does not appear on that, so.
You're saying if he's not, are you legally part of the LLC?
He may be related, he may be, does your dad owns the property or something?
He offered the information that he's part of the petitioner group. I didn't, I didn't suggest that, right?
Yeah, no, no, I, I, so I can't, shice.
You should wait for.
No, you should wait. If you're part of the petitioner, which you said, you got to wait for the petitioner.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Derek Roussel. I'm a graduate of Diamond High. I've lived in the neighborhood for forty years. I don't know where their, how far out their site plan is, not site plan, but their traffic study is gone, as currently the neighborhoods behind Diamond High School get overpacked, run through at a high speed from the students because they can't get out on Arlene. And I know that would impact a lot further, a lot further if more traffic is there. I currently can't leave on Arlene because of the traffic that is currently there. I know, I'm very strongly for development in the area, not of this size. I developed myself, but something this size in the neighborhood is not designed for it whatsoever. We don't want to end up like how Seattle is looking, where you can't go anywhere without waiting forty minutes to get a five-minute drive. I know some of their current buildings that they have built currently like this aren't even at capacity, and they're sitting quite a bit empty. Even current one, he said he built there on the Gallo Center. That's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, and I would just say, you asked about what the traffic is based on. The, the traffic impact analysis that's, that's in our packet is based on a two-hundred-and-sixty-unit condominium complex that contains twenty thousand square feet of retail and office space. So it's built on that scale. So you've heard, and I'll ask Francis a little bit, to say, could they go higher than that if the zoning were approved? And I think the answer is yes, in units. What's not described there, and that really matters when you talk about traffic impact, is what the type of units are. So imagine if a senior housing development unit generates less traffic than a four-bedroom unit. So, you know, sort of the details matter in addition to the units themselves, and that's all information that gets put into a traffic impact analysis. That's why, no matter what, it's very unlikely that they kind of hit it exactly as it's going to be, as well as the retail mix. But I just want to say, that's what the report that we have based on, and you've heard staff say that they would have to go back and revise that at some point.
Yeah, so my main question was, the, the, the study, how far in the neighborhood? Did they go in the backside of the neighborhood, or are they just looking at Arlene and Diamond?
So, that's a good question, and we can, we can ask the petitioner to address that. With the, with this, I think the sca, you know, how far the reach is, I think, is what you're asking about. And could I get you to spell your last name for me, please?
R-O-U-S-S-E-L-L.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Walt Arthur, and I live at ninety-five, twenty-one Emerald Street, and I've been a resident of the neighborhood for forty years. We've watched Diamond go from a two-lane road to a four-lane road, and we watched the traffic used to be able to pull out on Emerald Street, and not even bother to look to the left because you knew nothing was coming. Now you sit there and wait for eight or ten vehicles to go by before you get out. I look at this project, everybody wants to be like Portland, and I've been to Portland. Unfortunately, I've got a son that lives in Portland, and I have to go down there. And the, that's what, that's what the grandmother says. I, I see this project as something that is similar to Portland, and with the R3A, R3A, it's, it's a good concept. When they came up and tried to sell us the 2020 plan from Portland, the, one of the fellows mentioned to me, he says, well, people can walk all year round. And I said, well, no, they can't. He said, well, they'll have heated sidewalks. I said, buddy, we don't even have sidewalks. And he didn't, he doesn't understand that. I consider this project, off the cuff, sort of like, a PhD project that's piled high and deep. And we, we got the, we got the gravel pits, and they said that traffic wouldn't impact us, but it has. This building will be the tallest building south of Tudor in the, in the, in the South Anchorage area. At least that's what I think it will be. And you're putting, and that'd be easy for the boys in Campbell Lake to find it, lake, because they can see the tallest building. I hope they're going to put some, I hope they're going to put some lights on top of it. And in staff's comments, they said that after this goes in, the area utilities will be adequate. I want a definition of adequate, because everybody seems to have different definitions for different things. I think that, you know, if you, if you want traffic to go, before this project goes at this magnitude, you need to extend Northwood to Victor and open that up, and that would alleviate some traffic. But as it, as it stands right now, a seven-story building is not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Lorraine Greneer, G-R-E-N-I-E-R.
Lorraine, can you bring the mic down right?
Very. And I am a resident on Juliana Street. It's really nice to see lots of my neighbors here. Just to shed a little bit of light on our neighborhood, it is a dead-end street, which is pretty much a codasack without the circle at the end. We've been pretty spoiled to have access to the park through those woods for many, many years. And although I don't oppose our city growing and developing new homes, I do oppose the rezoning mainly because I know that it would allow developers to open up our street. We really, really appreciate the dead-end street because, as far as I, I know, I know all of the neighbors that go past my house. I recognize their cars, I know who probably is visiting, probably is not. I'm very, very comfortable in our neighborhood, it's very safe. We take a lot of pride in our homes. Everybody on my street takes such good care of their homes. We're in a secret battle over, some of our neighbors have really, really nice lawns, and we're trying to get on their level. So we take very, very pride, a lot of pride, in taking care of our homes. I think the biggest area of concern for me is just opening up our street. If this rezoning goes through, I just hope that the developers keep in mind and take us into consideration that we didn't move into a street knowing or thinking that it would someday open up. We really, really love our neighborhood, and I think the Sand Lake area is awesome. And I think they believe it's a great area to build on, but it's because of the people that live around there. So please, I just ask that you take into consideration to alleviate some of the traffic, not to open up our street as a solution to that, because it would directly affect us, and we, we want to welcome new neighbors, but not if they're, you know, speeding down our driveways. And like our neighbor said, that there is more kids on our street. A few years ago, there wasn't a lot of kids on our street, and now there's more and more little ones. At the end of the day, the sun's setting on the front yard, so I like to take my daughter out there, but that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Leisel. My last name is spelled L-E-I-S-L-E. I've been a resident in this area for about forty years. I've seen a lot of development in the area. I'm not anti-development. I actually work in that industry, have for about fourteen years here in Anchorage. What struck me was when you guys were talking with Chugatch Electric and the church, and you wanted to make sure that there was some consensus between Chugatch Electric and the neighbors, and that they were being considerate of what they wanted. We do not want to have the tallest buildings in South Anchorage right next to our high schools. I have two girls that have graduated from Diamond. I have a little boy that will be going to Diamond. I have not heard one person here say that they were opposed to developing that parcel, but we want to develop that in a very responsible way in, that is compatible with all of the other development that is in that area. That kind of density needs to be done somewhere else, someplace more urban in the city, not on Diamond and Arlene. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Hi, my name's David Vogel. I live at eighty-eight, forty-one Juliana Street. I've got three little kiddos on the street. Our street's barely wide enough for two vehicles. If you're passing your neighbor, you have to pull over, let him by. On our street, we've got at least six owners that have motorhomes that barely fit in their driveways. If they open this road up, they're going to have to take probably at least ten, fifteen feet out of our yards and driveways on both sides in order to open the road wide enough, put in sidewalks. I walked over to my neighbor's house today. We have an assisted living home next door. And once in a while, folks will cut through to try and avoid the four-way stop at Arlene and Eighty-Eighth. And as it is right now, we'll get three or four of those a day, and they'll almost run people over, they come ripping through. If we open up our road, we're going to have thousands of cars every day going down our road, going through all the neighborhoods. So I oppose it. And I think it's just too much for a residential neighborhood. This is, there's, there's areas of the city that are made to be built up, that can support a built-up development, but we are residential. We are tight-knit community. We've got our families, our kids playing, riding their bikes in the street. It's not a place to have thousands of cars going through every day. Thank you.
Thanks. Do, do you know what the right-of-way is on Juliana Street right now? I mean, I know the road is not built out, but would you know what exists?
As far as easements or?
Yeah, what's already dedicated. I mean, often our yards extend into what the right-of-way actually is, and it's just not built to it, and I'm just curious if you, if you all know, know what it is.
I don't know offhand. I do know that everybody uses their driveways to their capacity.
Right.
And our, our yards are not large. We're about seven thousand square foot yards, seven to eight thousand. So if we lose ten or fifteen feet of our yards to a, a road that's going to be wide enough for cars to pass each other, like, it's not even wide enough for cars to pass each other now.
Yeah.
Every time I come home, I have to pull over when someone's coming down the road. And then I'm assuming with the municipal plan that you're going to have to put a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
So you're going to have to extend the road, you know, I would say at least fifteen, twenty feet, minimum.
It just, it's just, it's language, it's what exists there as right-of-way versus what is built.
Right.
And we'll ask the question later, and regardless, your testimony is, is, you know, is accurate, and whether it's just testifying that you don't want it to be changed, but I'd like to actually know what's there right now versus, would there be additional takes versus just taking what is already right-of-way and building it? Those are two different things from a, from our, from our standpoint. Those are two different things from our standpoint. Doesn't mean it makes it any better for you.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Chad Colliander. Last name spelled C-O-L-L-I-A-N-D-E-R. I am a former resident of 8920 Greenbelt Drive. My parents moved into that house thirty-seven years ago and they currently still live there. I have had the concerns of, from them, and somewhat speak for them a little bit as well as they were unable to attend tonight. My father, first off, is a contractor, so he is pro-development as well as myself. The hard part of this is to see what they are proposing to develop as it is a large development going into an already overcrowded residential area as per seen by the overcrowded elementary schools in the area, the high school, and somewhat of the junior high. I understand that Anchorage has a housing residential shortage currently and potentially in the next several years as the 2020 or the 2040 plan projects. This project is quite overkill, in my opinion, and I would be opposed to the zoning change. One thing I will say is, from, one thing my father always used to tell me, being a contractor and developer, is, one thing is you never want to overbuild in the neighborhood. And this project, I believe, would be overbuilding, so I would strongly encourage denying the zoning change. So that was all. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. My name's Alyssa Wardwell. I don't know much more to say, but I have three young kids at home tonight to be here for a long time, so we get to hear my voice. I want you to look really carefully at the traffic plan. I think a lot of us are a little bit shocked that they were able to say that with three times the traffic, that that area is going to be able to sustain that. I also have heard, the writing on the wall to me is that if this happens, then Northwood will be cut through to Victor and that, I don't live as close to this particular development and that affects me much more. And I think that other people have already said that seems like the appropriate next measure. I would really like to see that not happen, so thank you.
Can you tell me your last name again?
Wardwell, W-A-R-D-W-E-L-L.
Great, thank you.
My name's Nicholas Bradme, Juliana residence. Been there six years, raised one child already out of the house, got two more going. As Dave mentioned earlier, we have our kids that do play in the neighborhood, ride their bikes on the streets. We walk across the street, talk to each other. None of us have a front-built fence because we come and chat. The safety concerns are, i.e., additional stress through people walking by our yards, advanced crime. You get that many people in a housing facility, who's gonna regulate it? Police are already overburdened. You get domestic violence, alcohol involved. You get folks, if there's a restaurant proposed, you get alcohol involved in that. There's a high risk of DUIs, impacts to our property or our children. The environmental impacts could very well be as a simple spill during building, contamination, runoff into the creek, goes straight into Campbell Lake, which in turn runs into the estuary. We do like to see that. Development does come, but slow and steady and not at a pace that it's gonna overwhelm us or others. Advancing down the street, we wouldn't mind having a couple more homes as we all like to see new neighbors. In the six years I've been there, there's not one that I do not like. We're all friends, we get along, we wave, and we just want to see our neighborhood grow and develop slowly but surely, but properly. And any motion to take that away is just not proper to any of us. We've all worked hard to get where we're at. We've all wanted to build a home for our families and this is where we start and this is where we'd like to end in forty years. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Kyle Godell. I live at 8941 Juliana, at the end of the street. For one, I don't feel like it's a great place to put a gigantic, you know, business and residential mix together. I've seen firsthand what new businesses can bring and they bring people who don't live in the area. People who don't live in the area don't respect the area as much. I worked at a restaurant called South Anchorage, a south restaurant and coffeehouse for the past three years, and I've seen what brand-new, nice-looking buildings and development can bring. We've had more vehicle break-ins there than when I worked downtown at the Glacier Brew House. We had it weekly. We weren't allowed to have people working there early morning by themselves for fear of stalking. We had multiple accounts of having to have security and police stop by, so we ended up not having a 4M baker at our restaurant, so we had to staff two people instead of one. My biggest concern for zoning for commercial would be just bringing in people from outside the neighborhood into ours who don't respect it and who are just gonna bring more crime with my two small children running around the yard. I mean, it's just not an option for me and neither is selling at this point because it's gonna be fairly impossible for me to regain my value back from my house. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Yeah, it's Godell, G-O-O-D-E-L-L.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Rose. I'm the Sand Lake Community Council President. I'm here today to give a voice to the people who couldn't attend this meeting because it's in the middle of summer. I grew up in Sand Lake. I've been there over thirty-four years. And as a representative of the Sand Lake Community Council, I cannot wait to see development in Anchorage and in Sand Lake. I cannot wait to see it. I brought up a map today. You can't see it, but it's the area. And over here, we have great potential for more residential homes. We have great potential for more businesses. And at this point, the 2040 plan, as it goes forward with Tom Davis, has come to the community council meetings several times. He has consistently said that there's opportunity in the area for development. We have large acreage. We have over an acre lots. We've also had the 2040 plan talk about the accessory dwelling units. And as we see it as a community council, where we have a development that's coming in and possibly expanding up to higher than the Energy Building on the corner of Sea and Tudor, we don't see this as an asset. We see this as a residential area and we would like to see the expansion of more residential homes happen in Anchorage. Obviously, that's the goal. We'd like to see that kind of development. And so for the builders, I know that there are other ways to go about getting those homes built and part of that process needs to be addressed in the Anchorage Assembly. Through that plan, it's extremely expensive to permit in Anchorage for residential buildings and that's probably why they're going up. We need to incentivize builders to be able to build residential, single-family homes. Those are the important things that we'd like to see in our neighborhood. The cost of living is continuing to go up, but we want to see that build responsibly. So there are better ways to cut costs to buildings through different permitting tactics and whatnot. The biggest concern I have as the president of the Sand Lake Community Council is the, one, transparency in this process and, two, the efficacy. So the first one, like I mentioned before, is the transparency. The developer has been invited, like we said earlier, on February 5th to come and present to us. And at that meeting, we had the lights dimmed, we had the presentation, we were able to see it. I went to their offices to see the proposal. What they didn't provide was time for feedback and time for questions. And those are the important parts when you're developing the plans. Before you go to ask for a rezon, you actually have to have those questions answered. So we would like to see them come back. We've invited them back and we want them to come back to the Sand Lake Community Council to be heard and to be responded to and to be able to have questions answered. We want them to come back. The second thing is, the community council doesn't meet during the months of June and July. We don't meet. And so this proposal is being rushed. This is in the middle of summer and as we know that construction never ceases and this is construction season, so there's plenty of time. We don't need to rush this. One of the things that I've really seen an increase in in the thirty-four-plus years that I've been in the community is a rise in crime. And so this issue, to me, is one of the most important issues to the community council. We've had a community patrol come in. When you have higher-density housing, you have businesses that are going to be targeted for crime and those are the kinds of concerns that we have as a community that we need to address. How is APD going to respond? How is the community going to respond as a whole? The property values we've mentioned, they are being crushed. People are going to lose the property values that they've invested their savings into. We'd like to see economic growth in the area. We'd like to see restaurants. We'd like to see great businesses. And those are the concerns that we have as a community council. When I started as the Sand Lake Community Council President, we had a good amount turnout-wise, but now we have over fifty, sometimes sixty, people there voting on issues. We have input from all over the community and outside the community that attend our community council meetings. We have a following of over seven, actually closer to eight hundred, I think it's 799 right now, that continually engage in the Sand Lake Community Council. And those are the voices that you're hearing and some of them that you're not hearing because not all eight hundred are here, present today. So we'd like to see more time for them to be invited back, this development to be invited back, to answer those questions before we rush to this next phase, which is a rezon. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Nikki. I have a question for you. You mentioned that Tom Davis, member of the planning staff, has come to the Sand Lake Community Council.
In February.
In particular, to talk about the 2040 plan.
Tom Davis?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I wonder, you know, we had staff explain and it's excerpted on pages fifty-four and fifty-five, there is a section of the plan that specifically calls out this parcel. Do you recall if he talked about that when he came?
He did. He specifically asked Tom Davis about that. He actually was able to pinpoint it on the map and show us what that would look like, show us the different alternatives. Because it's a large area, it's one of those pages on the map, I think it was on the 2040 Plan, page thirty-seven, where you could see the different zones. So you could actually see the gradient, you know, the size increases, the density increases.
Right.
And right now, we have, we don't see that as being part of what we want in the community. So we want responsible development.
But I guess my point is, because that plan passed.
Yes, absolutely.
Right. So do you recall that that was the feedback that you provided to staff at that time?
When the 2040 plan was going into a presentation, I don't know that that was the feedback that we gave them, but we did give them the parameters that we wanted for the neighborhood as a whole. And we talked about how the neighborhood as a whole has increased its density. We have, what you don't see on the map is that the density is increasing elsewhere in the neighborhood. We have lots of communities that are springing up and along Jewel Lake Road, which is why they're expanding that road. We have lots of higher density on Blackberry. And what you don't see are the empty lots and the empty buildings in the Cars Safeway Shopping Mall. There are businesses that they cannot even get tenants in that shopping mall currently. Where are they expecting to get tenants from?
Thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lawrence. I live on Juliana. I have lived there for about six years. I do have to say that this is the first time I ever received one of these in the six years I have lived there. And when I was looking at this packet on page eighty-two, there's a question and it says, "Have you sent notice to the residents of Juliana?" And it says, "Yes." And on page eighty-one, it's dated February 12th, 2018. This is dated May 24th, 2018. You know, and just like everybody, I'm concerned with the traffic, but I'm gonna avoid hitting traffic. I think we've realized, we need some streetlights, something for that. But what about the kids that walk? I mean, most, where are the bus zones? Have they hit with that and the walking? And there's no streetlights there for the kids. They just walk and they wait the four-way stop for their turn. Currently, we have the school district in an argument of what time school is going to start. We could have elementary kids walking out in the middle of this traffic because I believe this is close in the 1.5 area that we don't have buses. You know, and the green belt, all those houses, they're gonna have this beautiful green grass area that doesn't actually belong to them because there's a green belt. Is this area going to clean up this green belt or is this gonna be a muni-tax thing? And everybody in the other area will be paying to clean. Because if you have three hundred people living in an area, in a green area to go play in, are they not gonna use it? I mean, there's just a lot of concerns and, I don't know, I just want the neighborhood to be taken care of and not trashed. I mean, as for a lack of traffic, that's not gonna happen. There's not enough jobs to walk in the area. We all work somewhere else and we'll be driving there. But I just, I don't know. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to us all.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Eva Enters, E-N-T-E-R-S. I live on 8816 Juliana. And I'm sure after you guys have all heard this, you know you're all saying, "I'm sure glad I don't live there," right? I mean, gotta say, I'm glad I'm not in that neighborhood. Just a couple things. Juliana, when the school, the traffic backs up all the way down to Northwood, when parents are dropping their kids off at the school, it's backed up. I live there every day. I see it. If you put Juliana as a thoroughfare, what you don't know is Juliana is a slanted street. It's like this, it's not a straight street, it's a slanted street. I look out there and I see cars in the wintertime. We know we've got five months of winter.
Close the mic.
Five months of winter where I see cars sliding down. They go up Juliana to the stop and down they go. They hit mailboxes, they slide. So imagine a backed-up 88th and a backed-up Juliana. Where are those cars gonna go? I mean, you can't get up it, it's slickery. They just slide right down. So you're gonna have a backed-up Juliana, backed-up 88th, and there's really no ingress or egress that's good for this size of project. Another thing is my biggest fear is the safety, not just of our children, but of pedestrians on bicycles, walking. You've got the Campbell Creek. And it's almost like a blind intersection. They come so fast and I don't want to see another possible casualty like that little girl on 88th and Jewel Lake. It's gonna, if you increase the traffic like that, what really worries me is the casualties possibly that could come out of this. It's not gonna be safe. It's gonna be way too busy. And, you know, I just, I mean, I live there. I mean, some of these traffic experts can sit there for fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, but they don't live there. They don't see it. And it is a real big concern. You know, I do, so I oppose it. I don't oppose building a three-story building like on Northwood and Jewel Lake. They built that real pretty apartment complex. That's fine, but to build a monstrosity in that one area is just not a great idea for safety especially. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the development, just so everybody knows, the development, I've heard a couple of people say that they liked what's on Northwood and Raspberry.
Yes, it's beautiful.
That would not be able to be built under the R2M zoning. So if you wanted to see that, there would have to be a rezoning to accommodate that building. I just want people to understand that.
Well, it's...
So that would still have to require, didn't have to be an R3A, it could be R3. It would not be able to be built under the R2M.
Yeah, I don't oppose that. I just, you know, if you build something smaller, like a three-story, you're still gonna have the problems of ingress and egress, but not like what they're proposing. And opening up Juliana is not gonna be a great idea.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ruth Ann Dodson and I live closer to Moore's Middle School than I do the majority of the people that are here this evening. So I'm on the other side of Diamond and, but we do feed into Diamond High School. And I would like to thank you for your patience and listening to all of us this evening. I would also like to compliment the many residents that have spoken up tonight. And I would like to compliment the people from the Sand Lake Community Council. And I'd kinda like to tag on to what Nikki said. I periodically, from time to time, go to the Bay Shore Community Council. And that seems to be a very loud silence here tonight. I'm wondering if they have received a presentation because there are families that would be impacted because of their travel to Diamond High School for the school day and many events. And I encourage you to not support this rezoning because of the high-intensity impact to the area and because of the almost egregious impact to the traffic. And if you go to the Diamond High School... And if you go to the Diamond High School, one of their awards evening in the spring, there's a scholarship that's given every spring in honor of a young sophomore who was driving to Diamond High School in two thousand, and her car spun on Arlene Street, and she was hit brad-side, and she died. And that was in two thousand during the winter months. You're going to have so much more congestion and with the impatient teen drivers, you need to really not support this rezoning.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify, come on forward. Anyone else, raise your hands. Is everybody done or is there anyone else that wants to come up? Kind of like getting the last call time. And if someone else is going after, if you wouldn't mind queuing up. You're up.
My name is Yvonne Prince, and respectfully, I appreciate all of you. Anchorage doesn't have a housing issue. What we have is a money issue. Alaska Pipeline in the eighties was booking out 2.1 million barrels a day. Today, it's 500,000. The entire economy is down. It's nice to say we've got a 2040 project or a study, excuse me, but that really doesn't mean anything because shit happens. I mean, I was married to somebody in the seventies and I'm not with him today. Had I projected then, I wouldn't have walked down the aisle then. It just doesn't go like studies will. We have vacancies all down Jewel Lake, all down Raspberry. The malls that are right there, as Nikki said, they're empty. Every time somebody comes in, they go out of business within a year. It's horrendous. Yeah, they need to keep things smaller out there. This is South Anchorage. Yeah, apartments do great in Midtown. They do great Downtown or Mountain View. We don't do so well out in South Anchorage with apartments. They're empty. The ones that are filled out at Jewel Lake Bowl have MS-13 all over them now. We have a huge issue with gangs now in South Anchorage over there by the bowling alley. Will more apartments help that? No. And the number I heard at the Sand Lake Community Councils was three hundred and sixty apartments. There's no way, no way they can take that many in that spot.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Going once, okay. This is the last person unless I see someone queue. Okay, here we go.
My name's Amy Sorenson. I didn't come here actually intending to speak at all. I'm not right next to Diamond High. I am Raspberry and Caravelle, so I'm farther down off the Jewel Lake area. Where they talk about the traffic issues, I've got two children in the school district. I have a child in Sand Lake and one going to Diamond this coming year. The traffic all the way over at Raspberry and Jewel Lake is horrible during the school in and out. I'm one of those people. I go through other people's neighborhoods just to get to my own home because the traffic is so bad on the main thoroughfares. I can't imagine what would happen even this far away from Diamond and Arlene had you guys, had the buildings come in and we add one hundred, two hundred, three hundred more apartment complexes and businesses and people coming from all over town to our neighborhoods. The safety, there's kids that run across the street waiting for the bus to go to Big Mike's and get sodas for school. The safety is just a huge issue. It comes back to the traffic and the additional people. You've heard talk about crimes. The crime has gone up considerably in the last several years, and I just can't imagine putting more people and more volume into our neighborhoods. I think the rezoning is not the right neighborhood to have the first trial run on it. It's just not what's right for our neighborhood. Thanks.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to invite the petitioner back up at this point. I did not see any hands go up. So, yeah, we'll tell you, Tom, you're at, was it five fifteen? Five fifteen notwithstanding questions from the commission, I suspect there may be a few. But you have five minutes and fifteen seconds for your rebuttal.
I was actually begging for a bathroom break.
Oh, you want a bathroom break?
Yeah, that's what was, just short.
I will honor you that. I didn't take the first break, so we'll take a quick five. Thanks for intermission number two, third period. All right. The way this works is the petitioner had their full ten, they had a full ten minutes. They used up some of that time, their remaining five minutes and fifteen seconds. We'll watch that clock just like we watched it with everybody else, and then we will, we may very likely have questions for them that come after that time. And so that's just part of the normal procedure. So with that, Tom or JR, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. I don't want to eat too much into Tom's time, but just trying to keep this to a few seconds. I just wanted to reiterate that the Anchorage is growing. It's grown, you know, over the last hundred years. We need to plan for it to be able to grow for the next hundred years. I know there was a lot of concern that led to the development of mixed use. You know, we know we can't build industrial up. It's hard to build commercial up, so you kind of got to go vertical on residential. That's what we're trying to do here is to build sort of a model test case for 3A. We think this is an excellent site because it does have good connectivity into pedestrian infrastructure. And, I mean, the concerns that we've heard raised are concerns that will be raised on every rezon, really, the problems of density. You know, you've got schools, you've got police, you've got traffic, you've got the things that, that's why we have to pay property taxes is hopefully to help as a community solve some of these issues. I would have preferred on area-wide rezon that was like an opt-in, opt-out. As it is, we're going to see every developer go through one at a timing it like this. I do hope that this is approved because I think if this gets a lot of conditions on it or isn't approved, that's going to really have a chilling effect of waiting for people to try and rezon things in accordance with the 2040 Plan, which is going to be essential if we're going to accommodate a fraction of the expected growth over the next forty years or so.
And it's JR Wilcox, right?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Your four minutes.
Tom Drer, thank you. I developed, under the existing zoning of R2M could easily reach over 200,000 square feet of building while covering up to 150,000 square feet of the parcel or more with buildings and parking areas. The development plan will go to the Planning Zoning Commission for approval. The actual development site plan, as per Title 21 Code, requires a pre-application conference, a community meeting, and a public hearing before the Planning Zoning Commission. This has per the technical amendments to Title 21 that was on your consent agenda earlier tonight. Specifically, the title reads, "Applicable developments with thirty-one or more dwelling units shall be approved by major site plan review pursuant to subsection such and such." For residential developments of 140 units or more, the decision-making body is the Planning and Zoning Commission, lest it would go to the UDC. Building concerns on building, public concerns on building height, excuse me, R3A allows building heights up to seventy feet or six stories. For comparison, the existing trees on Emerald are about seventy to seventy-five feet tall. R3A regulations have strict controls on building heights where the land abouts other residential zoning. For instance, along the northern boundary of buildings seventy foot tall would have to be at least ninety feet away from the property line. For comparison, a building built to the current R2M zone could be thirty feet tall but only ten feet from the property line. This situation would actually cut off more view planes from the adjoining houses than R3A zoning would. The Planning Zoning Commission, the MOA planning staff, and the Assembly spent a lot of time creating the R3A zoning so that it would intelligently protect the surrounding neighborhood. The sledding hill park false information has been propagated around the neighborhood about us infringing on public park spaces and facilities. But of course, our development is only on our privately-owned lot. The sledding hill is on the Emerald parcel. Our lot line goes north-south close to the base of the existing slope. A development with the current zoning of R2M most likely put a fence up along the lot line. With approval of the R3A zoning amenities connecting the park to the east could be part of the Planning Zoning Commission's site plan approval. In approvals, the park could be a part of the package, a new sledding hill that would be entirely on the parkland and is owned by the MOA would be a safer alternative than the existing situation that could produce lawsuits if someone were to get injured or on private property. Juliana was designed, as you can see by the plaque, as a dead-end road. It was always designed to connect into whatever is developed on this particular parcel. The right-of-way is sixty feet. And within the traffic report that's in your packet, the road would have to be developed with curb and gutter all the way up and down there. As you know, in summary, we have spent three years to get here tonight, and we need five votes for a recommendation of approval to Assembly for their final approval and acceptance. So we hope we can work, tonight work out any issues or concerns you may have, and through a healthy, intelligent dialogue, come to a consensus. Again, we look forward to your recommendations of approval for the Emerald rezoned R3A, and we look forward to being able to create a neighborhood that people from all parts of Anchorage will in the future find this as an attractive and great place to live, where existing neighbors may be able to see their kids or grandparents find a quality place to live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Looney?
Yes, so a lot of the testimony we've heard tonight had to do with the traffic impacts and the level of traffic that's out there. And in the packet, there's a 2016 traffic report, which is clear and it seems pretty easy to understand, the recommendations. What has changed since 2016? Did I understand there was a 2018 update? And, yeah, has anything changed since, in the last two years?
Whatever, for this R3A zoning, the traffic impact analysis is part of the package here. But whatever plan comes forward, we'll have to, the traffic impact analysis will have to be updated. Someone may go higher density and someone may go much lower density. The balance between residential, commercial, and retail may change. And so that would be contingent on the traffic impact analysis that will be presented to the Planning Zoning Commission during the site plan review.
Yeah, so in summary, yes, it's just that. So during the site plan review process, then you'll update it for that purpose.
Correct. It'll be updated to specifically address the site plan that's submitted.
And my experience with the area, and it gets concluded in this report too, is there's already traffic problems. Arlene and the school and that whole intersection of Eighty-Eighth and Arlene is not an easy place to get through. So what I, there's a statement in the report that says that the site traffic from this development adds less than 10% of additional delay. So it's better already.
I'd like to refer that to the traffic engineer, Mr. Randy Kenny.
Hi, I'm Randy Kenny. With Kenny Engineering, we prepared the traffic impact analysis report. I would like to add one thing to Tom's discussion about the changes in the TIA in the future, maybe be a little more specific. I think there's two areas that will be updated. First of all, the current traffic impact analysis covers a duration of ten years that ends in, or is up to 2027. And by the time this thing goes forward, that design year will likely be updated. The other thing that is likely to happen is that as this project moves forward, some of the vague commercial areas or retail areas will be identified and specifically named, and perhaps at that point, we'd have to redo it just based on a better understanding of the type of facilities there. And then I forgot what I came up here for.
I think you answered, and the statement in the report mentions how this additional traffic is, would just be 10% of what was out there.
A lot of the report, the report was prepared in accordance with requirements from both the DOT and the MOA traffic engineering groups. And they have specific guidelines for preparing traffic impact analysis. They state that if you have an intersection that's performing poorly like the one at Eighty-Eighth and Arlene is currently, that is a level service that's very, very poor and high delays, then your obligation to mitigate your development's impact is at 10%. If it adds 10% more delay, you're obligated to go in and do some work to mitigate that intersection. In this case, we said it's less than 10%. As a matter of fact, I looked it up, just before the meeting, I looked up what we said in the report, and I think it's in the range of two to six percent depending on time of day. So the additional traffic from the development that we forecast will add another two to four, two to six percent delay.
Andre, do you have a question for Mr. Kenny?
Yeah, through the chair. We heard from the public a question about how far the traffic impact analysis could reach, or how the study was into the neighborhood. Can you address that, please?
Yes. At the beginning, any traffic impact analysis, we hold scoping meetings with both the, with any of the overseeing agencies. In this case, DOT is involved because of Diamond Boulevard, and MOA is involved because of the surrounding Arlene and Eighty-Eighth and some of the other streets. At those meetings, we were told that, or directed to evaluate the intersections, I think there were six of them, and they are listed in the report. Diamond and Arlene, Arlene and Eighty-Eighth, Eighty-Eighth and Blackberry, Blackberry and Diamond, Eighty-Eighth and Juliana. Then we were directed to look at Juliana Street between Eighty-Eighth and the proposed site, and then finally, the Northwood Drive and Strawberry Road intersections. So as part of that scoping report, it's agreed upon, this is what we're going to look at, and that in fact is what we looked at in this report.
And we heard some testimony people talking about Northwood beyond, and is that generally because once you start to get that far out, it really becomes more of a district-wide kind of look at traffic rather than an individual site TIA?
Yes, because as you radiate out from the site, the impacts of traffic disperse and become attenuated, and then it gets to some point where there's a marginal diminishing impact. And so I was just agreed upon early on to try to limit your scope to these key intersections that people feel will be of substantive impacts.
Okay. Mr. Gardner? Brian, are you back in again? No, that's from before.
Oh. I apologize if you commented on this before, but further to discussion about the 10% delay, I wasn't clear exactly how that, kind of what that measurement means. How is that measured or what kind of units are used when you talk about a 10% increase in delay or less than?
In low-stirbing situations like that, the facilities that are impacted are intersections. And our intersection analysis uses a delay in terms of average delay per vehicle that enters the intersection. So, for example, just to take a number, and I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but say the average delay for a intersection is 100 seconds. I'm just throwing that out there. That's a very poor level of service and a very poor performance in all traffic engineering circles. So what we would look at is say, what's the additional delay going to be caused by the site traffic that we're going to run through that intersection? And if the average delay then increases to, or is less than 10% of that 100 seconds or 10 seconds, then we aren't obligated to mitigate that intersection. If, for example, it reached to 150 seconds, then yes, we would, the municipality's code and the state of Alaska's code would require us to take a look at that intersection further and try to mitigate it.
And so that measure of average delay per vehicle, I guess, thinking about it, I assume then that that does somehow incorporate for, or reflects kind of the busy periods that happen with whatever else. That's all built into that because you've got a lot more cars passing through at that time. Is that right?
Yes, we evaluate on a peak hour basis, and in this report, we looked at three peak hours, the morning peak hour, which coincides with both commuters and the peak hours, the morning peak hour, which coincides with both commuters and the school traffic. We took a look at the afternoon school dismissal time traffic, and then finally, the evening commuting time traffic. So there were actually three, three time periods for these seven or so intersections that we evaluated.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, one of the mitigations could be reducing the number of units, or the size of units, or the type of units, if that, or type of retail? I mean, those are all things that can be taken into consideration.
If you reduce the number of units, and I'm sorry for, if you reduce the number of units, you're going to reduce demand, and if your demand exceeds capacity, then that would be a mitigation, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Spinelli?
Through the chair. In the report, you have, you say 260 units. Is that tied to, is, does that matter how many bedrooms are in those units? Is that, is a four-bedroom unit the same as a one-bedroom unit?
I do not believe it does. I know that in the trip generations manuals that we use that are published and are accepted as standard practice for this type of work, they don't cite the number of bedrooms. They cite a dwelling unit as a unit of, of traffic generation. And for this, but there are different kinds of dwelling units. There's, you know, single-family homes, there's apartments, condominiums, and actually, at the same, they have several different condominium classes as well. We assumed only occupied condominiums for this, for this analysis.
I stand corrected on that comment I made earlier then, sorry about that.
One more kind of follow-up. I guess, do you have a sense for if 100 four-bedroom units would create the same amount of traffic as 260 one-bedroom units?
I do not have a good sense for that. I think intuitively, you can say, yes, it would, because you're accommodating higher, or more family members with a, with a larger living space. But I do not know how to quantify that.
Okay, that, I was just wondering if the, there was a traffic pro technique for that.
What, what would be the threshold by which connecting and improving Juliana would not be required in a development?
Juliana evolved from this process, and if I, if I may just recount that, is to my understanding of how it evolved. The state wanted a access on, off of Diamond, and normally, they would not grant that. At one point, they weren't going to allow an access off of Diamond, but as the project evolved, they realized they needed one, and it's a right-in, right-out access. They did state, though, if we give you that access, we would like, we require you to open up Juliana, we require an access to Juliana, we require intrasite connectivity so that anybody on that site can access, or can reach any one of those access points on the site, and there's four, four access points, including Juliana. So that was a requirement of the state. The municipality, we went forward to their, on the underside of the traffic view, they said, we must open up Juliana because we're rezoning, and as a part of Title 21, and again, I'm not a Title 21 expert, but my understanding is that if, if you rezone it, you have to open up Juliana because you need to have a access on any four, on all four sides of a parcel if you can. So that's where the Juliana extension or connection to the site evolved from.
Gotcha. I'm not sure that that's a hard and fast rule in Title 21. Staff can correct me on that, but.
And I'm not either. I'm paraphrasing a conversation.
Yeah, I can certainly see the muni requiring it. I, I sort of challenged the state's jurisdiction to require us to open up local streets, but that's a, that's a separate matter. I mean, we already had the muni saying they wanted that anyway, but.
If I may, they wouldn't require it, but they wouldn't grant the access to Diamond without it.
That's very interesting. Yeah, I hadn't heard that one. That's a fun way to play. Any other questions? Mr. Strick?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I'd just like to try to figure out who all the players are. Who's Marathon Construction and Campbell Creek Partners?
Well, Marathon Construction was, is that my question, or? I guess you're looking at my TIA, right? Okay. Marathon Construction is Mike Bullock, the gentleman who was up here earlier, answering your question about construction. Campbell Creek was a former, the organization formerly was developing the site, and they've since evolved into the current developer. And I have no idea how that happened or why it happened. I, we prepared the TIA at that time, that's who we were preparing it for.
So since 2016, this goes back to the petitioner. The property has changed hands?
Yes, Chair, if you speak. Long story short, we used to have three partners, and one decided he didn't want to pay anything, so he was out, and the structure changed. But Mike and I are, have been involved the whole time.
So you've just changed partners, changed names?
We dropped from three partners to two.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions to the, to staff or to the petitioners? Andre?
I'm not sure how relevant it is for a rezone case, but we heard a lot about it from the public, the traffic and the impacts. Do you have a number of, what, can you give us a sense of what kind of units are proposed for this development? Are they?
They'd be in a thousand-square-foot range, two bedrooms.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Strick, then Mr. Looney?
Thank you. If I've got this downright, the current zoning.
You're Mike.
If I've got this downright, the current zoning allows a height restriction, I believe, of thirty feet, and would allow you to have, I believe, fifteen units per acre, which would allow up to ninety to one-hundred units without any rezoning currently. Does that sound correct?
The, the West Anchorage District Plan would allow, I think, three, oops.
Under R2M?
Adds three hundred dwelling units.
Yeah, you're just talking, Francis, you want to jump in on that one?
The West Anchorage District Plan identifies this property as medium-intensity residential, up to forty dwelling units per acre since 2012. So the West Anchorage District Plan adopted.
I'm speaking of current zoning, R2M.
Well, the R2M would theoretically allow one hundred and seventeen units if you just look at lot area requirements per unit.
If we did nothing, they can build up to a hundred and fifteen units or whatever.
That's correct.
Under the current, no higher than thirty feet.
Right.
Under the R3A, they can build, starting at forty feet, going up to maximum seventy after they do so much, and that was when they get forty units times six acres, or two hundred and forty units. Is that correct?
The, the height limitation, building height limitation is three stories, but you can, if you meet certain criteria, you can increase it to six stories.
Right.
The total number of dwelling units, theoretical just based on lot area, would be two hundred and seventy units under the, under the R3 district.
With that in mind, my question comes back to, with the testimony, if this were to go to a rezone, but if a special limitation were placed on the height by this body? Let's say we, let's say we restricted height to, I'm going to pick a number, fifty feet, regardless of the amount of additional bonus height limitations. What would that do to your plans?
Well, the, the R3A zoning, one of its purposes is to have first floor, say, of retail, maybe Cloddy Brothers, Rusty Goat kind of place, and, and other things. Then above that, a layer of commercial or office space or whatnot. And, and there's, I, in the R3A, there's, there's about twenty pages of different restrictions on what you can build and what you can, can't build, all the building setbacks and that you have to go by. We have to do a shading study, we didn't talk about that, but it has to be within a certain time. It's all specified in code between two different dates. You can't shade buildings during certain times of day.
Something has to be done to get up to seventy feet? Because I mean, if we can't go up to seventy feet, then we can't do the.
Right, yeah, and, I'm sorry, I'm starting to lose what your question was, but, so the basic premise of this new kind of zoning that's been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and Assembly is to, instead of us going in there and putting in a hundred and eight, whatever, four pluses at a low elevation and basically taking up the entire space, and unfortunately, being kind of an ugly development, if you will.
Let me, let me back up. Is it an all-or-nothing criteria here?
Um, no, I, no, I, I'm sorry, I wouldn't say that, but the, the point is that we can squeeze it down in area, and then, so like, the area above the fourth floor can only be twenty-five percent of the area of the lot, which is quite a bit less, where if you do an R2M develop, it might be like a forty percent.
Let me, let me back up. If this body were to approve, R3A would put a special limitation, a height limitation, regardless of what else is available up there going up to seventy feet? And if we capped it at, say, I'm just pulling a number, fifty feet, would you, would that derail your plan, and you'd say, gee, we wish we just kept it at R2M?
I, I need more than two seconds to respond to that. I'm going to have to consult with the owners.
Okay.
Well, I mean, like staff was saying, they're encouraging not to have restrictions on parcel because, oh, sorry.
So if you look at staff's recommendations, they directly address the question. If you wind up with more restrictions, particularly on height, you, you force it into having fatter, squatter buildings and preserving less of the green space.
That's right.
So, you know, part of the design goals that we'd like to see, and I don't really want to get sucked into too much of what the site plan will be, because of course, that's going to be a major site plan review, and you hate to start jousting at castles and the clouds too much. But we would really like to see this go through with the intent of the R3A, which would allow us to have that discussion when it comes to the major site plan review about that trade-off between open space and height.
So you're telling me that you are preferring to see an all-or-nothing approach to your zoning request? That's what I'm hearing.
I don't think all-or-nothing is a very good way to characterize it. What we're trying to do is, number one, this is why the staff recommended this way, but two, you're allowing for the maximum flexibility for the future discussion when it comes to major site plan review.
You're not answering the question.
The question is what effect it would have, right? Okay, I, right, I'm just getting it.
Maybe I can help. I mean, can, can you at least talk about what happens when you exceed a threshold that requires going from wood construction to, to steel, and what those thresholds mean? And so you're likely not to want to add one additional floor at that point if you're suddenly going from wood to steel. Is that not true?
Well, first, sorry, none, the buildings that are towards Juliana Street can't be that tall, just because of the shadow study. And you're, you're really forced into putting, whatever height exists has to slope back towards Diamond Boulevard. At least in concept, we've looked at all of this being steel. We don't see a, we really see it being more of a problem in that we end up chewing up a lot of the lot by forcing the, the height limit down. This may, might be a good question for staff also.
But you can simply say you, you don't want the, this idea of a fifty-foot, I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying that. You're here, clearly you want, you don't want that.
No, I would, I would strongly oppose, and I think it's at a horrible precedent for future R3A applicants.
Well, and I, and I, the only thing I would go back to is, is, and you stated it yourself, this was not part of an area-wide rezoning. This is part of a site-specific rezoning, and with that, we're dealing with site-specific comments. And, and so we can't treat it like it would be, we're not here amending the R3A zoning district. We're looking at a specific site. And, you know, that's, that's where our review comes in here tonight.
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to determine if there's a middle ground that might be possible, based on the testimony we've heard this evening. Where, I don't know where the, I don't know where the rest of this commission's going, but I'm trying to ascertain from you, the petitioner, is there a middle ground, or is it all or nothing, which in case you would rather keep the R2M if we can't get the R3A passed tonight?
Well, I mean, I think that the, if the choice is staying with R2M or going to a modified R3A, it's better to go to a modified R3A. I don't think that this is.
Thank you. That's, that's, and it's not all or nothing. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, did you want to comment on something? And then I'll go to Brian.
Yeah, I wanted to add to the discussion, you know, whether or not the, the petitioner for this rezone would agree to a special limitation or not, that from a planning perspective, the department would be concerned about having special limitations that were tailored too specific to one particular development that he might agree to, but might not work for the future of the property, or a different developer, or a different site plan, because we don't have that before us. What we have is a rezoning to a district. Of course.
But it's very site-specific.
Well, I think the commission should ask themselves, is, is the R3A district appropriate for this location? And if, if you, oh, I lost my train, I thought I'll just stop.
Yeah, when we looked at the 2040, when we looked at the stipple changes and so forth that went through over, you know, six months ago, and we looked at this piece of property in particular, and I think it was conducive for the R3A, we had this in work sessions, but I don't think it was really clear that it could go necessarily at seventy feet. I think we said three stories plus, and that's what was codic, not codified, but that's what was written in the comments section.
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's always been seventy for as long as I've been dealing with the R3A.
Eligible to go to seventy after meeting certain criteria.
Yeah, correct. And that's what kind of makes the whole package work, is that when you go over, before you have to do underground parking, that we're doing, we have to supply extra open space and plazas, and on and on and on to get that. That's what helps the whole thing work, because as every builder here knows, it's pretty expensive to do underground parking. But that gets all of the parking away from the street, and underground, under plazas, the rooftops will eventually be landscaped and whatnot. Thank you.
Mr. Looney?
Yeah, so this could be a question for staff. I'm just really trying to walk through the, the criteria for the 3A. I'm not that familiar with it, relatively new, but I understand, of course, it's the medium density, mixed use, and the gross densities would be between twelve and thirty dwelling units per acre. But, but the proposed, or at least some of the, the ideas for the, a site plan that may be brought forward would be closer to forty. How do you get from the thirty to forty dwelling units per acre?
It may be calculations based on net or gross. You know, the purpose statement doesn't necessarily translate to what, the number of dwelling units that, that would be built, given the site conditions.
I mean, I keep hearing 260 units for a six, six-acre property. Is, am I missing some math there or not? That's right around, I think, forty-three dwelling units per acre.
What we typically see is that properties are dramatically underdeveloped, that don't reach the densities that are called for in the, in these districts at all.
Yeah, and I realize you have, you take out some right-of-way or some things like that, we would probably reduce the density. Do you have any input, Mr. Tryer?
Um, yes, there's three different ways you can look at it. And the, the land use plan has thirty, and that's gross. Gross is in a general geographic area. It's not the area within the lot, and it's specified in Title 21 that you, the final deciding factor of how many units you put on a lot is the square footage inside of a lot. And in this particular situation with R3A, the first six pluses can be six thousand square feet, and then another thousand square feet per unit. And the tract A Emerald subdivision is two hundred and seventy thousand square feet, hence, two hundred and seventy residential units are, would be the maximum allowed. And it should also be noted that the West Anchorage District Plan has forty, and the land use plan has the maximum of thirty.
Well, thank you, that clarifies it.
Mr. Gardner?
On the discussion earlier about potential height limitation, and I'm not sure if this question is maybe better directed to staff, but it's not clear to me how that might, assuming that the concern that that's attempted to address is traffic and congestion, how that height limitation might affect the total number of available units on this site. that height limitation might affect the total number of available units on this site?
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, if you... In my opening comments, I just sort of did a quick... I made a quick statement that if the department's not recommending any special limitations. A building height limitation could have other impacts on the property. If you can't build up, then you'd have to accommodate the same number of units, you'd have to build wider buildings, and there would be potentially less open space, or...
No, but hold on. You got a number of open space based on the number of units. That can't change. I mean, that's not changing. You're not building less open space than what's required by code.
So, you're making a statement, then, that limiting building height will limit the number of units because all factor... Other factors...
It likely limits units, yes, for sure.
That's potentially true. This really is a puzzle of... There's a number of, you know, requirements that exist in code.
But does anyone have a sense of what... I mean, to the extent it limits the number of units, what that looks like? Just for reference.
Uh, through the chair, Mr. Gardner, we... So, we... Just based on the zoning, you can't say how many actual units could be built until you did prepare the site plan. The reason being, there are the yard setbacks, there are landscape requirements, there's the parking requirements, there is the private open space requirements, there's, you know, the entire... There's so many requirements in the book, you don't know how many actual units you can fit on the property until you've tested all of those.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, maybe that is just the answer. I mean, I get that. I just... It wasn't clear to me that necessarily having a 50-foot, you know, to pick a number of limitation, whether we could expect that to have much of an effect in the available units that go on, but if we don't know, we just... We don't know.
You don't know. How's it parked? How many cars are there, based on the unit sizes? I mean, there's so many variables that until you actually put it together, you don't know. You know, are you parking under, are you parking over? Andre, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, through the chair. This is a question for Staff. Since we haven't done a site plan review on a R3A project, can you... Can you clarify that that would come back to the Planning and Zoning, or UDC? And then, the real question, I guess, is, would there be the ability to limit the height at that time when you were actually looking at a project, like an actual project, rather than talking about the neighborhood's worst fear, which seems to be what we're talking about today?
Um, through the chair, if they do three buildings and 31 units, then they'll be required to do a public hearing, major site plan review. And if they go over a certain number of units, 100 and something, then it is Planning and Zoning Commission. If it's under that, it's the Urban Design Commission. Your second question, could the major site plan review affect, or limit, the building heights? I think that there is a provision in... There's a provision in the R3A district that talks about if you shade the neighboring properties, then you're required to go through an administrative site plan review, or major site plan review, if one is called for, to evaluate that. There is another part of code, the major site plan review standards, that I want to flip to and just review real quickly. I can get to it super fast. There's four standards of approval, and it is a discretionary review, so whether it be the Urban Design Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think the answer is simply yes. That border commission can affect the development's height, but let's just see which standard speaks to that. Site plan review, approval criteria. Site plan is consistent with approved plans, complies with applicable development and design standards, addresses significant adverse impacts that can reasonably be anticipated result from the use by mitigating or offsetting those impacts to the maximum extent feasible. That's probably the one. And then achieves the goals in consistency with the comprehensive plan. I think that there are two of the four approval criteria that could allow a border commission to... A change in development to limit its height. Yes?
Could I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so... It is very distinct. It's 140 units or more goes to Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thanks, Tom. Mitzi, you're in the queue.
Thank you. Probably just to restate the obvious question for Staff. If the site is rezoned to the R3A classification, building more than three stories is not a foregone conclusion. But there are many other hurdles to go through and to become more definitive about the specific project beyond simply the granting of the zoning change.
Yes, they would have to comply with the requirements to obtain a greater building height.
And I'm seeing the maximum building height shall be limited to 50 feet, not to exceed four stories on sites smaller than... Is... Okay, I got you. It's 30 feet, and then you go up from there. Some of those are fairly easy to achieve, which is the intent of it, right? Final questions for either Staff or the petitioner, specifically for the petitioner, so we can look to close the public hearing. Are there any other questions for the petitioner or their team?
Go ahead, Greg.
Is there a schedule anticipated by the petitioner for developing or initiating the site plan at this point in time?
No, sir. No, there is not. We still have another three months, or six months to go before we get to the assembly or so. Well...
If there was a zoning approved and a sunset clause placed on this, such that a site plan had to be presented, was within a certain timeline, otherwise the zoning This is something we're seeing in the lower 48, and for undevelopments that are just prolonged and hanging out there, and we've got a zoning and so forth, but I'm trying to zero in on a site plan that this commission will review, regardless of the number of units on this particular piece of property. And I'm just speaking out of turn, from myself, but that if this is just a... Are you warehousing the property until another developer comes along? Are you repackaging and sell it to another developer, developing group? Or is this something that is on the horizon in the immediacy?
What kind of timeframe are you looking at? How many years?
Years.
One year? That would be a little tight for traffic, because everything has to be redone, and it's amazing how much work we have... Well, you know how much work we have to go through.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to ascertain, you know, trying to bridge a... We haven't put in... We haven't gotten a motion on the floor here. We're trying to... I'm trying to see where the workable solutions might be while we have the petitioner present. So, I'm just trying to come up with some ideas that at least satisfy some of my concerns.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. So, realistically, though, we can't get any financing to do anything until we have actually gone through this process. And then, it's going to be subject to what's an actually, you know, investable project based on, you know, the economic conditions and things. So, we haven't even begun to really get our arms around what the actual site plan would be. What's been shown in the past was to try and give people some idea of what could be done on a maximum development scenario, and I think people have gotten really hung up on what we tried to show, which was what the maximum would be, but we don't know what we're building yet. We can't know. I mean, if we don't get back to, you know, growing and having the demand for housing units, this would never pencil to do something like that. We're optimistic that that's what's gonna happen, but this isn't something that's a one-year timeframe development.
Yeah. Mr. McGlaughlin.
To Mr. Strike's point, last year, the commission recommended approval for the 2040 plan, and then subsequent to that, recommended approval for the R3A district regulations. And accompanying that ordinance that the commission saw was a map that circled this property as being one of the sites for the R3A district, and those regulations that were reviewed. I... Yeah. The... This is one of the... This is one of the sites that was identified for this district, and...
Don't misinterpret me. I think this is a great site to be R3A. I think this is a great zoning for this site. My concern is the height limitation ability on this particular site may be too aggressive for this particular site.
Any final questions for the petitioner? Going once. Jared, you good? Brian? Greg? To my left? Any other questions? Okay. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing is now closed. If you thought that was hard... I'd like to ask that, not only to say the will of the body, but really what we need is a motion on the floor related to Case 201866, request to rezon from R2M to R3A.
I'll get it started. In the matter of Case 2018-066, the request for a rezon from R2M to R3A, I move for the approval of the rezoning request.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gardner. Mr. Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
As the proposal is currently written, I would not support the approval without some considerations for restricting the height limitation as currently allowed, providing up to 70 feet for this particular site. I would move to restrict that height limit to some number that this body might come to an agreement on, but as it's currently written, I would not support it.
Mr. Rooney.
Yes, I plan to support the motion. I know we've heard a lot of testimony. We know there's quite a few concerns with the community. We don't really have a detailed site plan yet. We'd all like to see that, but for the rezoning effort, and what it has potential to bring to the neighborhood, I do support that effort. Accounting for all the concerns, I think there's things we can mitigate those concerns for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, and I would remind the commission that in order to assist the assembly in whatever its action is, and this... The petitioner can... Whether or not we recommend approval or disapproval, the petitioner can choose to move forward to the assembly. Ours is a recommendation here tonight, just to be clear on that. But our recommendation ought to be based on the nine criteria outlined in the staff packet.
And as follow-up to my comments, may I make...
Go ahead, Mr. Strike.
And that relates to the... Any site review conducted on the property, or for this plat, I would request that this commission, regardless of the number of units, that this would come before this body for review. Now, that's... We're not in a meaning of the whole, but this is just commentary, looking for other motions to amend the approval.
So, just to be clear, in order... That would be a special limitation, would be the only way that you would ensure, should really to come forward with less than 140 units?
Regardless, any site plan for this property would come before the commission.
I'm just saying, if you want that, you would have to have the rest of us agree that that would be a special limitation. Acknowledging that it would still go to the Urban Design Commission, that frankly, reviews a lot more major site plans than we do.
Mitzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supporting the motion. I believe that the purpose and intent of the R3A zone, as it was established, was to be somewhat self-limiting, and for us to further limit it really defeats the purpose of the ordinance as it stands.
Mitzi, your comment was specific to if Mr. Strike were to add that special limitation, or the request to rezon.
As I understood, the motion was the request to rezon subject to a limitation on the height.
Sorry about that. Yes, so right now...
Have I got that confused?
A little bit. A little bit. We kind of... Partly Greg's fault, he threw it out there. But the actual motion on the table is just to approve it as is, and he made the comment that he would not be supporting the motion absent some further restriction. You've commented that you wouldn't go along with a restriction because of the R3A zoning. I think that's what I heard you say.
Which I guess means, he guess I would support the motion as it stands, but would not entertain supporting an additional limitation.
So, you're comfortable with the rezoning meeting the criteria that are evident in the rezoning?
Yes, because I believe that the limitations are already written into the ordinance, or somewhat self-implementing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Barker. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Mr. Gardner, it's your second. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, I just put my name on the list, so, no worries. I think I will support the motion as is, without any amendments, for a couple of reasons. One, I think it does satisfy the criteria identified in 21.03.160E. In particular, note that this site had been identified as one that was a potential... Potentially good site for the R3A zone when it was added. To my mind, I think that the questionable criteria identified in the code relate to, in particular, maybe number five, which is facilities and services, including roads and transportation. I think most of the comments we received today were with respect to traffic, but I think it's significant that this... At the moment, we're just looking at the zoning. We have a traffic impact analysis that was done that suggests that the traffic... The impact on traffic can be either mitigated, or is not necessarily excessive, and I think once we know what the project, or what the development itself will be, we'll have an opportunity, if it is of sufficient scale, I think that would affect the traffic, we'll have an opportunity to review it in detail at that time, with a better understanding. At that point, we could impose conditions as needed to address those effects. Also, I'd just note with respect to height, that as Commissioner Barker, I think, was getting at more generally, the zone, the 3A zone, has a number of specific requirements that can help address those concerns as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Spinelli.
I'm putting you... I'm putting you on the spot, man. We're all gonna be there.
Like that.
No one gets away.
I think that I will also support the motion, and it was a tough decision for me, but I think the main thing is the, I guess, back to the R3A and the limiting factors. I think what we heard from the community was traffic and building height, and I think if they... The project were to go forward that kind of had the traffic and height impacts that we heard the community didn't want, it would trigger the public hearing. The code is built to do that, so everyone gets to come out, and we would actually debate this one more time with actual building plans in place, so... Therefore, I support the 3A. I think... I think that a lower, smaller-scale 3A would actually probably be something the community would be happy to, happy with, so I'll, I'll support it.
I, I, I'm still not, I'm still not sure, and I, I think that, here's my issue. It's very common for us, especially when we have newly adopted plans, that it's supposed to be made a lot easier for us. So, we had a plan that was adopted very, very recently that specifically highlighted and called out this parcel, and called out this parcel for the specific reason that we're here today. So in some ways, as was put forward by the petitioner, it's almost unfair to them to have to come forward at this point when the city itself and we ourselves, as a planning commission, based on community input, and as an assembly based on community input, said, "We want this type of development there." So I think you have to understand their perspective. Their perspective was, hey, we're doing what the city says they want based on their plans, right? And to, so to some degree, I'm very, very disappointed that we go through that entire planning process without the conversation that's happening here tonight. And, and that's not to say that, I believe, we've been doing this a long time. I build high-density housing from, and on top of it, which is affordable housing, which is not always the thing that people want to see next to their neighborhood. So we hear resistance to density all the time. This was supposed to be easier because it was more recently approved and indicated as a desire of public policy. The zoning district itself was created explicitly for mitigating impacts without having to come up with a bunch of rules that don't necess, that restrict flexibility of a developer, and by that I mean, most developers, I believe, try to do the right thing. They need to know the rules so they can create a, a type of development that works within the rules. They don't like having rules sprung on them at the last minute that sort of throws everything off. So the idea was, let's create an R-3A zoning district. Let's encourage housing first and foremost, allow a certain amount, but not, you know, not as much commercial as they want, but a certain restricted amount that'll be at the scale, because it's actually a percentage based on how many units. So they come back and they just, if they, if they are to propose less housing, then there's even less commercial that can be put there. They can't up the commercial and lower the residential. There's heights, there's all kinds of frankly overly complicated things that none of us are sure how it really works until we see a site plan. Honestly, I've never designed to the R-3A zoning district. I don't know anyone that really has all the, all the way through a site plan. The thing I think that we look for when we look at these types of high-density rezonings is we look at the available roads that are accessed from, from the developments, and we look specifically that they're either on collector streets or arterials. This, this site is bordered on two sides by a neighborhood collector and an arterial. We've heard their issues with those collectors and arterials, as there are many of our arterials and collectors in our, in our community. I'm, I'm a little bit unsure on how to deal with Juliana Street. Juliana Street, if you look at a plat, by nature of it not having a cul-de-sac there, was always designed to be connected to this parcel, that development. Otherwise, it would have been required to have a cul-de-sac on it. It was platted with 60 feet of right-of-way. So over the course of time, neighbors have come to enjoy not just kind of the five or extra eight feet of, of right-of-way that I enjoy on my lot, because it's oftentimes, local roads are often not built to the full 50 feet, but neighbors have come to enjoy a lot more than that eight feet, because it's probably a 20 to 25-foot strip-paved road, and the rest of it is treated and looked at as yard, which in, which in fact it is not. And so I don't hear any discussion that additional right-of-way would need to be purchased, but what I hear is that it was likely that the road would be built out, probably to close to the full 60 feet, which would mean the curb, gutter, sidewalks on both sides of the street. It would for sure change the nature of that street. Some would argue, though, as a single-family subdivision, that road would be, you know, the same street that we would build if we were to build a brand-new single-family subdivision today. It would look identical. It would be changed, but it would look like a subdivision that we would build today. All that being said, we heard, we heard many of you come out and testify against it, and I respect your opinions completely. I counted 33 people testified, 34 people testified, two testified in favor, 32 testified against. I'm not convinced that this development is actually going to happen. I'm not sure that it's feasible. I think when the developer puts more time in it and looks at the economics of it, I don't believe they'll realize the 280 units that are proposed. But I believe the framework of the R-3A at least sets a quality development that is appropriate for being located on Diamond Boulevard. So with all that, I'm going to support the motion to recommend approval. Goes on to the Assembly. You will all be noticed again, regardless of how this vote turns out and whether they decide to move forward. And with that, Jared, you're back in the queue. No? So with that, I ask for the Commission to vote, please. This rezoning is approved. Typically, Francis, we would say, how long until it shows up on the Assembly agenda?
Uh, three months.
About three months' time. You'll all get noticed. Appreciate everybody's testimony here tonight. We'll take a five-minute break and let everybody exit. Where are all the people from Chugiak? Huh?
These guys first.
We, oh, no, then they would have missed out on all the entertainment. You don't get entertainment like this out in Chugiak, do you? Well, at the senior center, you do. I know you do. I work at Cook Inlet Housing. I walk into our senior buildings and I always say, "What's going on?" I never see anybody there, and they always tell me, "It's because you never walk in at night. You should see what's going on at night." I walk in at 3:00 in the day, right? All right, shall we do this? Everybody here? All right, next up is case 201869, Chugiak Senior Housing, a request to rezon three parcels of land from CEPLI and CEPLIP, someone was creative when they making that stuff up, to CEB3SL District with special limitations. 21.4 acres, located south the intersection of Birchwood Loop Road and Glen Highway, west of the Old Glen and north of Peters Creek Landfill Access Road. Could we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chugiak Senior Citizens Incorporated is requesting to rezon three parcels of land totaling approximately 21 and a half acres from CEPLI, Chugiaki River Public Lands and Institutions, and CEPLIP, Chugiaki River Public Lands and Institutions-Park District to CEB3SL, Chugiaki River General Business with Special Limitations District. The proposed special limitations are as follows. The first is all uses shall be limited to those allowed under residential uses, community uses, or the use category of assembly as identified by AMC 2110050A5, Table of Allowed Uses, Chugiaki River Residential, Commercial, Industrial, and Other Districts. The second special limitation is all residential dwellings shall meet the definition of senior housing as defined in AMC 2114040 Definitions, and the third special limitation is a 25-foot development setback shall apply to all property lines abutting the CEPR, CEPLI, CEDR, or residential district. The Chugiak Senior Center would like to develop additional independent living senior housing units on a vacant parcel within the petition site. However, residential units of this type are not allowed under the site's current PLIP zoning designation. Because of this, they are choosing to pursue a rezon of the property to accommodate this expansion in services. CEB3 was chosen as the most appropriate zoning district to rezon to, given this parcel's location and the CEB3 district's ability to accommodate various related uses such as multifamily dwelling, assisted living facility, habilitative care facility, adult care facility, and club lodge meeting hall. The accompanying special limitations of the rezon will ensure that the property is only utilized for senior housing, thus preserving its community facility designation within the Chugiaki River Comprehensive Plan. As such, an accompanying amendment to the Comprehensive Plan is not required. And the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend approval, and the Assembly may approve a rezoning if the rezoning meets all the following nine criteria. For criteria number one, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. This rezon will help facilitate the development of additional senior citizen housing units within Chugiak. Currently, the site is zoned CEPLI and CEPLIP, which does not allow for any residential use. This rezon to CEB3SL will add limitations to the property that will ensure that all residents on site remain as senior housing. Standard number two, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. The 2006 Chugiaki River Comprehensive Plan update, Land Use Plan Map, identifies this site as community facility. There are several goals, objectives, and policies from the Chugiaki River Comprehensive Plan that are relevant to this rezoning, specifically Policy 3C3A, Goal 41A, Objective 4C2C. For standard number three, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. This rezon is consistent with the purpose and location requirements of the CEB3 General Business Zoning District. This rezon will facilitate further development, which will provide services, housing, and community space for senior citizens. This site is bordered on two sides by Class III major arterials, which expose the site to heavy automotive traffic daily. In accordance with AMC 2107, all new development at this site will have to provide compliant landscaping, parking, and vehicular circulation. Standard number four, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. This rezon is compatible with surrounding zoning districts and existing developments surrounding the petition site. The proposed CEB3SL zoning matches the existing CEB3 zoning to the east and northwest. Future expansions and new developments of the Chugiak Senior Center will operate in a manner consistent with the petition site's classification of community facility in the Comprehensive Plan. Standard number five, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. The petition site is accessed by South Birchwood Loop Road and the Old Glen Highway, which are both classified as, as Class III major arterials in the 2014 Official Streets and Highways Plan. Class III major arterials see over 20,000 vehicle trips daily. It is important to note as well that unfortunately, public transportation is not available at this site. Fixed service, I should say. Fixed service is not available at this site. Standard six, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. Proposed rezon is unlikely to adversely impact the natural environment. Future development on the southern parcel, Lot 3, will include any required landscaping and drainage improvements, as well as will be subject to a 25-foot development setback where it abuts CEPLI, CEPR, CEDR, or residential zoning district. It is unlikely that the additional traffic generation and resulting noise will increase the adverse impacts to the surrounding natural environment. For standard seven, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. The petition site encompasses three parcels, two of which have already been developed. The third parcel, Lot 3, is located in the southern end of the petition site and contains 7.25 acres and is undeveloped. Any new development on this parcel will be limited to those uses allowed under the proposed special limitations. Standard eight, the Planning Department believes the standard is met. The 2006 Chugiaki River Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Plan Map, identifies the petition site as community facility. By rezoning this parcel to CEB3 and adding special limitations, the resulting land uses allowed would be limited to those consistent with a community facility. And standard number nine, the standard is met by default. The rezoning will not result in a split-zone lot. The Planning Department finds that the approval criteria for a rezoner met. The department recommends approval of the rezoning from CEPLI and CEPLIP districts to CEB3, subject to the special limitations as shown on page eight of the staff packet. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Strike has a question for you.
Real quick one.
Real quick, is, is the intent that the property owned by the MOA will be sold or transferred to CSC Inc.? Or will the municipality continue to own the property?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, I, I believe, we don't have a representative from HLB here tonight, but Chugiak Senior Center has leased the property, and I believe that is the way that the property will be handled 50 years into the future.
Perhaps the, the petitioner can probably speak to that when they come up.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question. The, the term "community facility," that, that, that in the, in the Comprehensive Plan, it, it ident, it identifies senior housing as community facility specifically?
Uh, Mr. Chair, that's correct. If I look at page one of the staff packet, right below the definition of a community facility directly from the 2006 Chugiaki River Comprehensive Plan is included...
Which, where, oh, commu, uh... Senior centers is different than senior housing? I don't have an issue, I mean, I, I was gonna ask this. I, I'm not the guy that thinks that because you go through a rezon, you have to amend the, go through this extra step of amending the comp plan. I think that's a silly step. I personally disagree with it. It's not, I don't know that it's how other communities do it. I think it's another hoop that we, we, we always are going to have to update our plans over time. That's the nature of it. So I'm not gonna get hung, hung up with that. I was just trying to figure out, it, it also could have been the petitioner saying, "We want the special limitation because we want to ensure that if there is housing, it's not, it's, it's only going to be senior housing." So I, I just, I just wanted to know how we got there to that SL.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe it's the, the latter of the two examples that you presented there, to where the petitioner would like to see those parcels dedicated towards senior housing, and the municipality as well.
Okay. I'm good with that. Mitzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in summary, these three conditions, the three proposed special limitations were proposed by the petitioner or by the Planning Department?
Uh, through the chair, Ms. Parker. It was kind of a collaborative effort. We had met several times with the petitioner last spring, and these three proposed special limitations were agreed upon, and they were included in the petitioner's application.
I should know this, but I'll ask you anyway. Does the definition of senior housing also encompass housing for occupancy by persons who experience disabilities?
Uh, through the chair, Ms. Parker, I will look that up for here shortly.
So Ryan's looking up the definition in Title 21, right? Mitzi, you're, you're suggesting that often in senior housing, under federal law, you, you are able to house individuals with disabilities?
You got it.
Yeah. So in other words, we'd be potentially creating a fair housing violation. Got, gotcha? Yeah?
That's my thing, I'm sorry.
That's your mantra.
That's my mantra.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I could, if you prefer, I can read the entire definition just to get it on record. It is rather lengthy.
We got nothing but time at this point. My kids are asleep.
All right, so I'm pulling this definition directly from Title 21. This would be Section 2114040 Definitions under Housing, comma, Senior. Senior housing is defined as follows or according to successor portions of the Federal Code of Definitions as adopted by the Community Development Department. Housing is, A, provided under any state or federal program that the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development determines is specifically designed and operated to assist elderly persons, as defined in the state or federal programs, or B, intended for and solely occupied by persons 62 years of age or older, intended and operated by, for occupancy by persons 55... by, or for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age or older, and at least eighty percent of the occupied units are occupied by at least one person who is fifty-five years of age or older. A housing facility or community meets the definition of Category C only if it publishes and adheres to policies and procedures that demonstrate the intent of Category C and complies with rules issued by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development for verification of occupancy, which shall provide for verification by the reliable surveys and affidavits and includes examples of the types and policies and procedures relevant to a determination of compliance with such rules issued by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development.
There are many days where I wonder why I work somewhere that relies so heavily on federal funding after you read those definitions. So Mitzi, what do we do with the situation? Is there a qualification that you'd later offer to avoid? But the reality is, under those definitions of federal funding, you actually are allowed, in fact, you cannot deny, I think maybe is a better way to put it, right? Or you're allowed to... Is just anyone with a disability? I can't remember how that works, actually.
No, it's a little more boutique than that, but yeah.
Maybe you all know what we're talking about.
And they've got some of the housing through Section 202.
Right.
There's a lot of 811 money that keeps being underutilized up here.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I have a broader issue, which is, in the long run, are we being smart to limit this to senior occupancy when integrated neighborhood is probably becoming much more the norm? But that's a whole broader policy question that's really beyond the scope of the application.
Yeah, and I'd even say, we have a housing in Seldoria, so very different, obviously, with senior housing, and we recently had to change it to allow it to be housing for everybody, just for the, just to fill it.
And we're seeing that a lot in any application. I mean, they are proposing two-bedroom units, which I see as, the model in mind is for one unit to be occupied by a live-in or higher or relative caregiver, but...
You could even say, yeah, and I'm gonna go to Greg here in a second, but there'd be a way to modify that second, that second...
That's where I was gonna...
Go ahead, let's hear it.
And with Mitzi's input, maybe there's a fourth condition rather than modify the other one, and the fourth being, and I tried to work up some language, but would need help to complete it. "Notwithstanding limitations proposed, no limitations shall be contrary to and the code or the ADA ruling or HUD ruling that you had identified." I don't know how to finish that, but keep us in the legalese, so to speak, because you're the expert up here.
We're not gonna skip the petition. No, we're not. Anyway, so you're right, we've gone on long enough. So here, we would like to open the public hearing. It's been a long evening, for you especially, so please state your name for the record and you have ten minutes.
I'm sorry for all of this.
There you go. We have hotels here in town.
That's okay. Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Erin Jondale, architect and representative for the petitioner, Chuyack Eagle River Senior Center.
Erin, can you just get that mic a little closer? Yeah, thanks.
It's a little bit better, guys. Oh, yeah, that does sound better. Should I start over again?
No, we got, I think we got it.
Okay. I'd like to reserve the majority of the time for any rebuttals needed. In addition to myself, to support the recommendation tonight, our representatives from the Senior Center, and that's about it tonight, so.
They're all well. The advantages to going late at night.
Okay, so, we appreciate this opportunity to reiterate our application need and justification for this rezone by highlighting that this rezone is to bring current infrastructure and uses into legal compliance and does not seek byway or change to the current mission, but allow continued services and growth of existing uses. This isn't just to build new, but this is also to maintain their existing. If we don't rezone now, anything that requires a permit will be disallowed by the municipality, and we'd have to go through this eventually soon rather than later. So this is an opportunity to make compliant what's already existing and part of the intent. Chuyack Eagle River Senior Center is a longstanding community support organization operating not-for-profit for over thirty years in Chuyack to support our senior citizens, their independence, and their salubrious aging in place and connections and contribution to the community, the municipal economy, and the neighborhood at large. We appreciate this, we appreciate the expressed local and municipal support, and we look forward to moving forward with the continued efforts of the current mission. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, you wanna speak now? No. You can, why don't I do this? I'm gonna open the public hearing, okay? Anybody wishing to testify, come on for, now, not you, you're part of the petitioner, right? Right, so this is just a formality. Anybody wishing to testify? Seeing none, you have eight and a half minutes of rebuttal. So we'd like to hear from you. You came all this way, you sat through this, you have to hit the mic at least once.
Okay, I can do that. My name is Chris Singmanson. I'm the president of Chuyack Senior Citizens, Inc. And I just actually want to just make a couple of clarifications. First, on the location of the property in the petition package, it has us at Old Glen and South Birchwood. It's actually Old Glen and North Birchwood.
Gotcha.
And the other is on the ownership of the property. There's actually three parcels that we're looking at rezoning. One is an undeveloped 7.2 acres that is leased to us by the municipality of Anchorage. The lease specifies that it's gonna be senior housing and that we have to do that. The other is the eleven acres that we currently have our primary senior center and housing on. That is actually municipal property. We don't own it, we don't lease it. The municipality maintains that in the facilities. Then the other is actually where the HUD 202 building is, and that also is specified to be strictly senior housing because of the type of facility there. And hopefully, down the road, Chuyack Senior Citizens, Inc. will actually own the property, but as of this time, it's still under the HUD 202 rules and will be.
Okay. And the municipality clearly is in favor of their parcels being zoned this way, yes? I mean, the petitioner is Chuyack, but it's really, the municipality is owner, right? Huh? She's got, yeah, okay. All right, any questions? Do you want a question?
My question comes back to Commissioner Barker's concern about the limitations to senior housing exclusively only appearance and whether or not that is in a violation of any of the ADA or disability rules out there.
It shouldn't be. The HUD actually won't allow us to do anything but senior housing, so we have one complex that is senior housing. The lease with the municipality specifically specifies senior housing.
I guess I would refer to Commissioner Barker, your knowledge on that topic.
Some of the older projects do actually limit it, but at the same time, it kind of skirts around. That's why they created the 811 program, which is specifically for people experiencing disabilities. My suggestion would be to add on to the end of condition number two, add a comma at the end and say, notwithstanding the provisions of the Fair Housing, Federal Fair Housing Act.
Yeah, that's good, right? I mean, what we're just trying to avoid is, and when we look at fair housing overall, we look at these things, and it just avoids any reason to call out the municipality overall. You don't have any objection to that?
No, and we do actually have people with disabilities in our assisted living who are non-seniors.
Exactly. I mean, that's what we're trying to, yeah. Yeah, okay, that's what you were gonna say? Okay. So you'll get that later, and I got, I've got people jumping in and jumping out all the time. Okay, Ryan first and then Andre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna propose, you know, if the concern was number two of the special limitations, I think we'd be getting the same end product if we were to scratch number two altogether and just limit it to those uses, because then the uses would still be limited to those under residential community or use category of assembly, which granted, may not be specifically just senior housing, but certainly, you brought up a concern that frankly, I was not aware of, but as individuals who build senior housing, you're much more in tune with those requirements. And granted, I don't think the planning department was aware that there could be potential issues.
Yeah, no, I think the issue, though, is they want it, though. They want it to be primarily senior, you know, basically senior housing. It's just, there's this, there is this provision that's, and I don't know what the numbers are. It's a minority, but it exists in our housing and there's a reason for it. So I think, I don't think you'd be okay with us taking away the senior. It's a nice protection to have if you're trying to create the senior commu-, I mean, unless you wanted to go with what Mitzi was going with, you want to have a multi-generational kind of development, but that's a totally different thing. Do you all have an opinion on whether striking the senior housing requirement or keeping it in and qualifying it? And can you state your name for the record?
Linda Hendrickson, and I'm the executive director out at Chuyack, have been for almost fifteen years. We do have ADA in our assisted living, and we kind of do it on a case-by-case basis, and so we don't limit that. However, some of our grants that we have for our assisted living and for our HUD project, they are specific on the age.
Right.
But we can put in a request to have them sway that for us so that we can allow folks to come in if we have a certain kind of an application come through. And we always do that if we have an opening, so, yeah.
So then to that point, I mean, do you wanna, we can add this notwithstanding thing, which is, I think, probably if it were in front of me, in my inclination, just to avoid a fair housing issue, I'd probably want this qualifier, but you could also, you could also scratch that, or you could say something like, "A majority of residential dwellings shall meet the definition of senior housing," right?
Or...
Hmm? What, how I define majority? No, it's not. It's fifty percent plus one. And so you, like...
Do you recall that?
Help us out. Help us go home, please. We want to help you. I mean, the other way to do it is we approve this and you tweak it before the Assembly approves it and you do your research and you figure it out, right? And that's, you know, and we don't, that happens. Go ahead.
So, a quick search of the HUD website actually talks about the Fair Housing Act and it specifically having exemptions for some senior housing. So I think Mitzi's original suggestion might just be the easiest catch-all.
Okay, we good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah? And if you decide between now and Assembly approval, that doesn't work, then it's pretty easy to change. Ryan, you wanna, you good with that?
Mr. Chair, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Based on that definition, we're all gonna be eligible at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, right. We're all there. Okay, anybody, sir, do you wanna, you come up and use up some of this time? No, you're good?
No.
Okay, all right. With that, I will close the public hearing. The public hearing closed. What's the wish of the body? Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hit your mic, Mitzi.
Speak softly enough without the mic. I move then in the matter of case number 2018-0069. Would move to approve with a slight change to condition number two, to add a comma at the end and the language notwithstanding the provisions of the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Right, very good.
I so move.
Very good. That's seconded by Mr. Strike. You good with that? Okay. Any discussion, Mitzi? Can you speak to the approval criteria?
I can. First of all, that this is a well-established use in the Chuyack neighborhood. Command the senior center and the land bank together for looking forward into the future of making what amounts to largely a technical correction to bring it into conformity with the Comprehensive Plan and with the appropriate zoning nomenclature. It does meet a continuing, ongoing need for supportive housing and senior housing in particular in the Chuyack Eagle River area, and it complies with and conforms to the Comprehensive Plan and the Comprehensive Plan maps, and is generally consistent with the zoning district purposes of the requested zone and the purpose specifically being to provide for supportive and senior housing and senior citizen center activities.
Thank you, Mitzi. Anyone else wishing to comment?
I'll speak.
Go ahead, Greg.
And I think it's appropriate that our member from the Chuyack area would made that initial motion. Thank you, Mitzi. I would point out that there was no public testimony or comments opposing this action.
Thank you. I would also point out that the Chuyack Community Council submitted comments in support of the rezone, and we find that it is, that the request meets the all nine approval criteria. Could I ask the commission to please vote? The recommendation to rezone is approved. Good luck at the next step. All right, before everybody goes, Michelle wants to speak to one thing, and you're gonna make this like, you're gonna cut the twenty minutes down to like eighteen, right?
I'm gonna cut it down to like two minutes.
I figured.
It's my, I think my mic is on. I just wanted to follow up, and Mr. Spring isn't here, but he asked me last week about what the status on the Title 21 Users' Guide is. And so, can you, is my mic on?
Yeah, but it's maybe, are you close to it?
Yeah. Oh, there we go. And so, we just wanted to report back. I met with the current planning division and we sat down, and instead of trying to do a Users' Guide, which has been talked about for several years, we're gonna go ahead and strike all the references from it in Title 21. We recognize that there is some, there's not a consistency in how, especially first-time light users are kind of being guided, so we are gonna develop some documents to better guide people on what the process is. But we, and we have the director's policies that we're doing when we need to have intent, but we're not gonna create a Users' Guide.
Look at you already increasing the, checking stuff off the list. That's one way to do it. Congratulations.
I'm learning that.
Wow, come over to work with me for a little bit and check my list out. Okay.
We'll have it all knocked out by Friday.
With that, we've held, Mr. Strike, motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Looney. This meeting's adjourned.